Roll call please.
Council members, commissioners Camacho, Laura, Lutz.
Here.
Dr. Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor President Elias.
Here.
All present.
Councilman Lutz, could you please perform the invocation for us?
Yes, if we can please stand and bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day, and we ask for your hand of blessing in this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom and productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work within our city of Pico Rivera. Amen.
Councilman, Laura, can you...
Yes, can everyone please face the flag, place their right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes on the agenda today?
Yes, Mayor City Council, we are going to take a closed session first.
Council?
Pleasure, the councilman, yes.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so I'd like to call a recess for closed session. We will re...
Yes, I'll announce the items, Mr. Mayor. We have items A and A, B, and C. Let's go, we're going to do all three, Steve.
Yeah, we're going to do all three.
All three, A, B, and C for closed session. If appropriate, to recess into closed session at this time, so we will convene. (end of transcript)
And I'd like to call the May 25, 2021 City of Pico Rivera Council Meeting to order. Roll call please.
Council members, commissioners Camacho, Laura, Lutz.
Here.
Dr. Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor President Elias.
Here.
All present.
Councilman Lutz, could you please perform the invocation for us?
Yes, if we can please stand and bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day, and we ask for your hand of blessing in this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom and productivity, and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work within our city of Pico Rivera. Amen.
Councilman, Laura, can you...
Yes, can everyone please face the flag, place their right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. "I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes on the agenda today?
Yes, Mayor City Council, we are going to take a closed session first.
Council?
Pleasure, the councilman, yes.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so I'd like to call a recess for closed session. We will re...
Yes, I'll announce the items, Mr. Mayor. We have items A and A, B, and C. Let's go, we're going to do all three, Steve.
Yeah, we're going to do all three.
All three, A, B, and C for closed session. If appropriate, to recess into closed session at this time, so we will convene. (end of transcript)
Councilmembers, Commissioners Camacho. Laura.
Here.
Lutz.
Here.
Dr. Sanchez.
Here.
Mayor President Elias.
Here.
All present.
Councilman Lutz, could you please perform the invocation for us?
Yes, if we can please stand and bow our heads. Heavenly Father, we come before you today to give you honor and praise. You are the source of all that is good. You are the source of all our blessings. Thank you for every gift that we have been given. We thank you for the opportunity to come and gather together this day, and we ask for your hand of blessing in this meeting. We ask that you would guide and direct our meeting so that it is full of wisdom and productivity and respect for one another. Thank you for helping us to accomplish our work within our city of Pico Rivera. Amen.
Councilman, Laura, could you...
Yes, can everyone please face the flag, place their right hand over your heart, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Mr. City Manager, do we have any changes on the agenda today?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, we are gonna take a closed session first.
Council?
Pleasure to be councilman, yes.
Okay. Are we ready?
Yes.
Yes, okay, so I'd like to call a recess for closed session. We will re...
Yes. I'll announce the items, Mr. Mayor. We have items A and A, B, and C. Let's go, we're gonna do all three, Steve.
Yeah, we're gonna do all three.
Okay, all three, A, B, and C for closed session. If appropriate, to recess into closed session at this time, so we will convene.
Do we have any presentations today? Not hearings, public presentations first.
None.
None?
No, Mr. Mayor, but we do have, if I may, report from closed session, since we did.
Yes, sir.
We moved it up, so it would be appropriate, Mayor, at this time, to provide a report from the council's discussion in closed session. The record should reflect that the City Council convened in closed session with all five members being present, that items A, B, and C were discussed with a closed session. There was no final action taken that was required to be reported at this time. Direction was provided to staff on these various items, and that concludes my report from closed session.
Thank you. Public hearings, Mr. Counsel.
Yes, the first item for council consideration this evening is a public hearing considering landscape and lighting assessment, District Number One. There is a present, I'm sorry, there is a staff report that's before you from the city manager, unless there's any other questions. Are there any written communications or oral communications on this item? Records should reflect that there are none. It would be appropriate then to close the public hearing and bring it up to the council level for consideration of the recommendation and adoption of the recommendation. Is there a motion to that effect?
Do I hear a motion?
So move as recommended?
Second?
I second.
I have a question. In regards to public hearing, does it include items one, two, and three?
Just one at this time, council member. We're taking them step by step.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Second?
I second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Approved. Item, moving on to item two, which is the second public hearing for the Paramount Mines Landscape Maintenance Assessment District. Again, on this item, this is a routine matter for council consideration. The city manager has provided a written report to the city council on this item. Has there been any written or oral request to speak on this item?
There are none.
There are none. And at this time, Mr. Mayor, the public hearing would be closed. We bring it back up to the council level for consideration of adoption of the recommendation as presented.
Oh, should we accept?
So move as recommended?
Second?
I'll make a second.
May I, Mr. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The third item is another public hearing. This is the first public hearing on the fiscal year 2021, 2023 biennial preliminary budget. This does have a presentation with it, and we offer this, this public hearing, again, pursuant to the requirements of municipal code and government code, there's only requirement for one public hearing. However, the council can receive the information tonight and continue it on to the June 8th session for a public hearing. Are you intending to present tonight or waiting till June 8th?
Yes, we're presenting.
So, Mr. Mayor, with your permission, the council's permission.
Our public comments.
We will have public comments, but we do have staff's presentation.
Mayor, City Council, at this time, I want to turn over to Director of Finance, Angelina Garcia.
Thank you, I'll be presenting from my seat this evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. This evening, we're continuing our discussion of the city's two-year proposed budget staffing and the proposed five-year capital improvement plan. So we held the first, the study session on April 27th to focus on the, to emphasize the general fund operating budget and the structurally balanced budget for two years. At that study session, we held off on presenting the staffing that was included in that budget, and we're going to focus on that in tonight's discussion. And so, just to reiterate some of the, just the major timelines and key dates that we have built into the biannual budget calendar that was presented in March. Here we are with the first hearing, and we'll follow it up with a proposal to adopt the budget at the June 8th regularly scheduled council meeting. To reflect on the city council priorities that were taken into consideration by all members of the team here at the city, we focused on the, the six priorities that you have before you. Before we get into tonight's presentation, we wanted to reiterate that the roadmap and guidance we followed in formulating the proposed staffing and capital plan are those six priorities that are before you. As the study session focused on the operating budget numbers, tonight's focus is on the organizational staffing that will be crucial in implementing all of the priorities included in this proposed budget. Since the city began working on the long-term strategic plan, we've been focused on reviewing all aspects of the organization, including staffing and job duties. Earlier this year, in an effort to get closer to eliminating the structural deficit, the city rolled out an employee retirement incentive program and made it available to all employees at retirement age that had at least five years of CalPERS service credit, in other words vested in CalPERS. Ten employees took advantage of the program. In order to ensure service levels were not compromised, alternatives such as backfilling with part-time positions have been factored into this two-year plan. So here is the proposed positions that are outlined before you in the staff report. As you can see, we had an adopted authorized position count of 156 positions at this time last year. Through working with the vacated positions and the positions that were vacated through the E-RIP, we were able to come up with three, 143 proposed positions throughout the organization. You have them scheduled out here by department. And so now, for the remainder of the presentation, each department head will present their own position control and their own reclassifications for their particular department. So first, I'll hand it over to Catherine Fuentes, Assistant City Manager, to go over the Administration Department.
Thank you, Director Garcia, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. Before you, you'll see the org chart for the Administration Department, which includes the city manager's office, city council's office, and the city clerk's office, as well as the Office of Sustainability, which is a division underneath the city manager's office. Major changes which are outlined in the second slide, Angelina, if you can scooch over. So, one of the things that we were able to accomplish through the restructuring of the Office of Sustainability is we were actually able to take a division of four and convert it into three, along with, you know, increasing our revenue stream with Cal recycle dollars. So technically, the coordinator there is indicated as prime on the org chart is the only position that will be fully allocated towards the prime enterprise. The principal analyst will be shared between the Cal recycle revenue for the franchise fees and the prime fees, and the administration technician will be fully paid for through the new Cal recycle funds that the division was able to acquire. The secretary position that was in the Office of Sustainability will be transferring to the Administration Department, and they will actually help support both the city manager and city council's office as well as the prime division. So that position, again, will also be allocated half to general fund and half to the prime enterprise. So in total, the changes to those divisions, or yes, to those divisions, were actually salary savings for both the prime enterprise and the city manager's office, or the general fund. The other item, I don't know, Anna, if you want to touch on this, I can just very quickly go through it, is the city clerk's office will also see a reclassification. The FTE position count will remain the same at three positions. However, the administrative clerk will be reclassified to the junior deputy city clerk. I don't know, Anna, if you want to add any other comments. And with that, I'll hand it over to Director Hudson.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, and members of the City Council. Human Resources really wants to be lean, and so last fiscal year, if you recall, we had downgraded one of our senior analysts to a personnel assistant. This year, we decided to take that off the organizational chart altogether. We want to make sure that the service departments really have everything they need, be, you know, public works, community and economic development, and parks and recreation. And so, we are eliminating the personnel assistant, and again, we seek to be a lean, efficient department.
And I'll talk about the, the department formerly known as finance. We're proposing a name change to Administrative Services, and that's reflective of taking on the Information Technology Department. We're going to realign it from the Human Resources Department to the Finance Department, and that's simply because, you know, with the, just the need arising from all of the financial transactions and financial flow of all of the prioritization of items that, that are in the organization, it's, it best, it's best aligned with the Finance Department. A lot of the system, program, system, software application needs stem from the Finance Department, so it's, it's just better aligned in that department. And so here is our proposed organizational chart. Not too many changes to that except for the reclassifications that we are proposing. And off to the right, you'll see two positions in the Information Technology Division, and we'll go into that a little bit more in the next slide. So on to the reclassifications. First of all, my title change would have to change from Finance Director to Administrative Services Director. That's just a title change. There's no changes in, in the actual job description or any of that stuff, other than taking on the IT department. For budget and long-range planning, being reflective of the fact that our analyst that's sitting behind me is the go-to person and is the primary contact for all budget-related items, she, you know, took on a two-year budget. Not sure that, that this is very well-known, but she also formulated the five-year forecast for the city that was, that was presented, I think, a couple of years ago, almost single-handedly. So she was already at a higher capacity than the analyst, so we just wanted to reclassify her into the senior analyst position that is more reflective of the duties that she's actually performing day-to-day. On the accounting front, also along the same lines, the senior accountant was already performing supervisory-type duties and basically assigning the day-to-day duties of the accounting staff. So it's more reflective, as we went through the work plans and assessed her workload and assessed the job duties that she was actually performing, that it was better aligned with a senior manager position, accounting manager, than a senior accountant position. Over in payroll and accounting, we have two account clerk, three positions that we are proposing to reclassify them to technicians, to finance technicians, one for payroll and one for accounting. So the account clerk three that has been processing payroll for a number of years now, basically performs it with very little supervision. There is supervision of the duties, and there is verification of all of the items that are processed every two weeks for payroll, but she really falls outside of an account clerk three job description and is more aligned with a technician role. Same with the accounting technician that is proposed. The account clerk three position in accounting processes the accounts payable every couple of week, every week, I should say. In addition to that, he also assists the accounting, the senior accountant, with accounting functions such as proposing journal entries, you know, assisting with the GLs. That's something outside of the account clerk three position. Over in purchasing and accounting, we have mentored an account clerk two that, right now, is under the revenue section to actually take on some of the purchasing duties and, you know, assist our accountant three position with some of the purchasing and procurement procedures and processing, so that, again, falls outside of the account clerk two position and more aligns with the finance technician. And last but not least, you know, speaking, shifting gears a little bit more towards the Information Technology Division, being reflective of all of the demands of the city and the current organization and how dependent we are on technology. We've been operating with just one IT technician for a number of years now and supplementing the help desk with interns. I think it's a little bit more in line with the long-term plans and the long-term needs of the city to now have a higher-level position in addition to the technician to serve more on the networking side and implementation side of, as we're, you know, going towards GIS and a virtual city hall and all of the many projects that we have to streamline some of the operations here and to go paperless and just to take out some of the, just duplication of efforts to, you know, invest in a senior information technology technician. And so now, I'll turn it over to Mike Garcia, the Community Economic Development Director, to talk about some of his organizational structure.
Can I link up? If, I have a quick question.
Yes.
You put in the PowerPoint, a lower-level position was eliminated. What was the position? Was it multiple positions?
So, right, so let's take, for example, the account clerk two. If we, if council approves the proposed reclassification to technician, that account clerk two position would be eliminated and would be replaced by the technician position. So nobody would be displaced. It would be just that lower-level position would be written out of the position control.
Okay, Mayor, City Council, there are some changes to our organizational chart that you will see. If you, if you look on the left side of the org chart under Economic Development Division, we are proposing to add an analyst position. We used to have an Economic Development Manager and a senior manager that assisted in the Economic Development Division. This analyst would be critical to us to help us as we're moving forward on some initiatives, not only land acquisition, but a proposed business improvement district, Whittier, and looking at special districts and tax increment financing districts. So we think that that would really help us not only doing business retention and attraction, but taking on some of these special studies to see how we can get towards a Pico Rivera 2030 vision that we're proposing for the city. Something else that's neat here is adding back the vacant principal planner position in advanced strategic and planning division in the planning section. We'd like to fill that vacancy. We'd also like to fill the assistant planner vacancy. We had one of our members leave and go to another organization last April 2020, and we'd love to give an opportunity there for our technician to move up. Something else in the org chart here is seeing a planner that's been with us for a while, grew from within code enforcement into planning to see if, we believe he's ready for the senior position, senior planner position. That would be a tremendous help. We had a retirement in senior building inspector. The senior inspector retired in January, and so right now, our building inspector is being a tremendous help to us. We have a part-time building official right now that helps us, and he is a certified building official. He is getting his CASP, which is a very difficult certification for accessibility. I don't think we've ever had a building official that ever had a CASP and a building official certification, so. And he's somebody that we've been training as a building inspector from within our organization the last four years, and we're very glad to have somebody who's younger and really working hard to get all the certifications that you don't typically see in a building safety division. So we think it'd be great for him to have an opportunity for that senior inspector position. Something else that's important here is we see that there's a big need in code enforcement. We had a vacancy for the past year and a half in code enforcement. We'd like to fill that vacancy and have three full-time code enforcement officers. And then at the far right, what you see is a coordinator position, and what, this position was lost 10 years ago. And so a lot of different programs that we could administer, Cal Home, Home, and different CDBG programs have kind of slowed down and kind of been neglected. We would love to fill that position, have them really help us out, not only with that, but other housing development. We, between myself and our, my deputy director, we tend to try to handle a lot of the housing-related duties, and I honestly feel that we're not doing, doing it the justice it deserves. So those are the main things you see in the org chart. Next page, please. And so I broke these out by reclassifications that we think would help vacating the secretarial position and turning that into an analyst position. That position became vacant through an early retirement incentive program. Again, I was talking about adding an analyst to the Economic Development Division, promoting a planner to senior planner, promoting a planning technician to assistant planner, and reclassifying a counter-service rep to a community development technician. This individual's been helping out tremendously on different, in different areas, printing reports that others do not do, and so we'd love to recommend that reclassification. Next slide. We are looking at adding that CED coordinator, which would be in housing. There's a lot of city-run housing programs that we would love. Now, this is not Section 8. This is other affordable housing funds that we received through HUD that we would like to begin anew, overseeing the contract with groups like Neighborhood Housing Services, who we're trying to work with, and other folks in CDBG. We'd love to look at a first-time homebuyer program. And then finally, a reclassification of our senior coordinator to the title of supervisor. We think that better fits the work that she does in Section 8, so we're recommending that reclassification. And what we're recommending here is, you see, that the building inspector position would remain even if we were to move up the building inspector position to the senior inspector. We'd like to keep that, because we do, we do not have a building official full-time here at the city. We're operating with one inspector right now. We had to bring in a contract inspector to help us out. We're, you know, if that person goes on vacation, gets sick, we can't shut down inspections. So having those two positions would be critical. And are there any other slides? Parks and Rec is now, Pamela Ugar, our Parks and Rec Director is ready to give her presentation.
Mike, I have a question, a quick question.
Yes.
So you don't have any eliminations in, in your department?
Uh, no, no.
Just the reclassification?
It would be taking the E-RIP for the secretarial position and re, and turning it into an analyst. The salaries are identical, so I think maybe depending on who gets elected and depending on the qualifications, there could be a, a change in salary, but I don't know that that'll occur, so.
Thank you.
I'll start with the org chart. Our assistant city manager, when I got here, you know, seven months ago or eight months ago, she challenged us to have a five-year, what would be the best org chart that you could come up with, you know, for your five-year plan? And I'm really excited, because this was part of my dream, that it would look like this, and so we're really on year one. So I'm really happy that you encouraged us to do that. What it, the changes that you'll see here is that we've aligned our org chart to look like the profession, the profession of recreation. This is what a typical org chart looks like. Prior years, you had many of the coordinators were direct reports to the Parks and Rec Director. Prior years, you had many of the coordinators were direct reports to the Parks and Rec Director. So anywhere from 12 to 13 people were directly reporting to the director, which is very time-consuming. It's a lot of work, it's a lot of energy, and it takes a lot of work away from the director so that that person can be doing long-term planning or grant writing or doing other things for the city. So in this work chart, I'm really excited because we're moving the coordinators under the supervisors who will directly report them. And we go from 12 direct reports to nine, which takes a little bit of pressure off of the Parks and Rec Director and puts a little bit more pressure on the supervisors, which is exciting for professional growth. And everyone is on board with this. So the team is pretty excited about it, and I'm looking forward to it. You can move to me. Next slide. We have one elimination in our department, but it's due to a vacancy. We had a position, a person who moved on to another position, and we have realized that we can do without the position and have some cost savings. We've got some opportunities for some part-timers to become promoted in the part-time levels. We have REC ones, twos, threes, and fours. So this will give them an opportunity to do some advanced recreation part-time work. And then we'll give some oversight to some, one of our full-timers who's in our department. So there will be no negative impact to our department with this elimination. And that's all, that's all we have for our department.
Mr. City Manager?
Yes, Mayor.
The Parks and Recreation Organizational Chart. I've had a little, no, I've had a lot of difficulty even beginning two years ago. This organization is extraordinarily large, and it also has some branches in there that I think don't even fit in the Parks and Recreation situation. Now, I asked the previous city manager why that was done. And he responded by saying he had a lot of confidence at that time with the director of Parks and Recreation, so that's why he put those departments under there. So it wasn't terms of function, okay? Why do we still have media and, you know, communications and so on that's so vital for us in the organization like that?
So you're saying the media team in the Park and Recs Department?
Yes, for the city.
Yeah, I think in meeting with the Park and Rec staff, some of the priorities that they have, getting the publications out, the information that flows through Park and Recs, it just serves well to have it in that particular department. As you know, they are very busy. In fact, one of the items that you have today is to possibly expand those duties and responsibilities. So I think it just works best under Park and Recs. Also, as far as functionality, the Park and Recs Department has room for them to also be located in that particular department as well.
But that's going to affect the speed that we need to be able to respond to issues and actually be able to educate our community and residents.
Yeah, we actually are going to take our game up on the Parks and Media Team. So when we bring in our new technology, like our 311 app, that is going to help supplement getting that information out to our residents.
Okay, I'm going to be on the record saying that I don't think that it works in a function that, that manner. Anyone else? Any questions?
Mayor, if I may. City Manager, is there an opportunity to do two branches of media?
I'll have to meet with my Park and Recs Director to just explore that option.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Also?
I just want to give a brief comment. You know, I have full faith in the Director Pam Ugar and her ability to navigate some of these issues. And I'm actually excited to see what she can do post-COVID with Parks and Recs and some of the programs that they're putting together. I'm on the fence on, I hear your critique loud and clear, but I'm on the fence, and I'd like to give her a chance and see exactly how they put this together. But I hear you.
Continue, please.
So now we'll go on to Public Works. Director Edia is not available today. She's out, a bit under the weather. So I'm going to try to pinch-hit for her this evening, and I might need a little assistance from the city manager and ACM. So here is the Public Works Department proposed organizational chart. We'll go over some of the changes, reclassifications. And in terms of the E-RIP participants, this is where we saw the largest pool of E-RIP takers, particularly in the areas of street and facilities maintenance. So that's where you'll see the decrease in the proposed positions for this year and for the next two years. We also had some additions that we'll go over in the next few slides. So in the Water Authority, we are proposing the addition of a utilities manager. And this is to manage and represent the city for the Water Authority-type duties in meeting with other authorities, in meeting with joint pools for water-related items, water-related subjects. And also to carry out the five-year CIPs in terms of being the point-to-person, not really the engineer, but more of the project manager as we carry out, you know, the water master plans, the pipe improvements, the PFOS, and then the meter changeouts over the next five years. In addition to that, we are recommending to reclassify a water supervisor to senior water supervisor. And this is specific to the certifications held by this person in this position. So that it's a little, you know, of a different classification than a traditional supervisor as reflected in the job descriptions. Through the E-RIP, we saw one water system operator, operator one vacated. And so that is a proposed elimination. Additionally, there is one water system operator. As we did a forensics on the position control from last year and prior years, we saw that there was no real articulation as to the position, this position. So this is just more of a cleanup to fairly represent the actual authorized positions. Over on the street maintenance side, there were six maintenance workers that took advantage of the E-RIP. And so reflecting on that, we are proposing the elimination of those positions and backfilling them with part-timers for 28, 28 hours per week for each of the part-time personnel that are going to be employed. Additionally, as we're doing more cleanup in the position control, we saw that there were three positions on last year's master control that were not really articulated in past presentations or past proposed budgets, actually. So this was just a cleanup that we felt needed to be articulated, presented for full transparency.
If I can add to that, Angelina, I just wanted to make, be clear on those positions that she's mentioning is sort of erroneously on the master position control. That's cleanup. Those are positions that have historically not been filled. And so that is why they're being proposed for elimination, that they were not needed. That's why they were not filled.
Over on the Parks Maintenance Side, we are proposing to reclassify one coordinator to supervisor, and that is to create that supervisory position within Parks Maintenance previously. The supervision, there was one supervisor for both parks and facilities maintenance. So this is just for a better organizational structure and, you know, just to balance out the supervisory and manager duties. You know, to give the other supervisor a little bit more concentrated supervision over the facilities, the facilities work. Under Facilities Maintenance, we do have the elimination of an equipment mechanic two for fleet. And this was a person that was essentially driving the city fleet to maintenance yard, to a mechanic repair shop to actually repair our vehicles. So we will be supplementing that position with a part-time aide to assist us with the backfill. Additionally, we're proposing to eliminate one facilities maintenance worker, one. And that was a position that was vacated through the E-RIP program.
So in summary, we have a net reduction in positions of 13. So that takes into account all of the eliminations that were articulated in the past slides as well as the additions for the, for the, that each of the department heads mentioned. The net fiscal impact was articulated in the prior presentation, the study session on April 27. There are net fiscal impact to the general fund savings of $624,000. So that concludes the eliminations, reclassifications, and addition proposed that are included in the next two years' budget. Now, we will move on to the capital improvement plan, the five-year capital improvement plan.
Let me ask if there are any questions. Council?
And Angelina, before we move on, I just wanted to add that the management team presented the early retirement incentive program as a two-pronged solution to the city's structural deficit. The E-RIP program creates savings only if positions are subsequently removed from salaries and benefits. So the E-RIP was also a management strategic approach to creating vacancies to avoid worker, workforce displacement and provide management with flexibility to allocate resources to the city council's priorities. And I believe this administration, I can speak for the team that we've met on this. We've worked with the work plans that were done by the employees that we believe this is the most transparent and compassionate solution to fixing our structural deficit issues.
Member?
Thank you for that. My question to that comment is, so what happens if no one takes a second round of E-RIP? Then what happens to them?
I'm sorry, can you repeat?
Yeah, my question is in regards to the second round of E-RIP. What if no one takes you up on that offer? What happens to those positions?
Those positions would remain on the books, they'd be filled.
Okay, and then previous years, we would keep those positions?
The only E-RIP that I was aware of was done, I think, about five years ago. And I believe that those positions were kept on the books, which is also part of the reason that our structural deficit is in the position it's in.
Got it. So I think what I'm trying to march out is if no one takes a second round of E-RIP, then what will, we're just going to leave them on the books? And then they're going to create a structural deficit, and we're just going to leave it like that? Or what's, what's going to be the plan?
No, so the purpose of the E-RIP was to create vacancies to avoid workforce displacement. So if the E-RIPS are not taken, then we are, you know, at this time, we're not looking.
I understand the purpose of E-RIPS, it's to create vacancies. Like, I understand that. My question is, what happens if no one takes us up on that?
We have a structurally balanced budget right now. So going into the long-term strategic plan, this was, the first round of E-RIP was to, you know, move away from, you know, a structural deficit. So we're there, right? So the second round of E-RIP would create opportunity for us to dedicate more resources, more financial resources towards the priorities that the city council laid before us, such as more towards economic development, more towards capital improvement projects that right now are not included in the operating budget.
Got it, okay, thank you.
Thank you, Angelina.
Any more questions?
So now, moving on to the five-year capital improvement program. And again, I'm going to present this without the Public Works Director, but I'll do my best. And if there are questions that we're not able to answer because we are not the subject matter experts, we will make ourselves available for one-on-one so that we can address any questions you might have on any particular project. So here's a little bit of a busy slide, but we wanted to just focus in on the proposed new projects that are included in the, in the Enclosures one and two. Enclosure one is proposed, new proposed projects are the five-year proposed by year. And then the second enclosure is by funding source. So we have a total of 72, almost $73 million in proposed new projects over the next five years. Obviously, we're going to concentrate on the first two years projects as those are the ones that we budget for. And we'll ask for authority to appropriate in, over the next two years. So you might notice that water doesn't have a whole lot in here, and it's because we front-loaded it. So a lot of those projects have already been, been budgeted and funded for in, in the current fiscal year in 2021. So to address the PFOS, which is the first priority, it's going to take us the rest of this year and the rest of '21, '22 to address. So it's just natural that you're not going to see a lot more new money plugged into water until year '22, '23. But we are going to dedicate approximately $31.2 million towards streets over the next five years. And that is, you know, to address the PCI, the pavement conditions index that we currently hold. Right now, we're in the 50s, where a good index would be around the 80s. So this speaks to the improvement of our streets, not just like the normal slurry seal, but like more of the grind and the full rehab of certain residential and arterial streets. And so we're taking advantage of the certificates of participation. We have $15 million of debt that we still have not fully utilized the funds for. And we're going to be asking for a second tranche that was already approved by previous council, but this is just formalizing the issuance of the second tranche of the 15 million towards the street rehab. Over to facilities, we do have ADA, Americans with Disability Act, required improvements of most of our city-owned facilities. So this five-year plan addresses $3.3 million of dedicated resources towards ADA facility improvements. You know, I'll just touch on some of the major ones. Storm drains, like I mentioned in the study session held about a month ago. We did have master plans for the water sewer and storm drain. So both the storm drain and the sewer or wastewater are in line with those recommended priorities that are outlined in the water and sewer master plans. So that, those are the major categories. And in the next couple of slides, you know, I kind of already presented an overview. But here is a more detailed description of some of the particular line items for each of the five years. So rather than go through them, I'll just highlight a few. Like I mentioned, the AMI, the meter changeouts and replacements are scheduled to happen in fiscal year '23, '24. And in total, it's going to be about $3.5 million. So rather than go over every single line item, want to open it up to questions you might have on the capital plan.
Questions? Mr. City Manager, the, you know, the label proposed new projects, okay? These really are projects that we need to address because we, we are in need of them, aren't we?
That is true.
What is the condition of our city right now in terms of the things that we're budgeting out?
We have a lot of deferred maintenance on a lot of our infrastructure items. The five-year capital plan prioritizes some of those that were done as a result of our master plans. Despite that, we are still underfunded with the actual needs of the city. We calculated over $100 million of infrastructure needs. This is a partial, I would say, drop in the bucket to correct some of our infrastructure needs. As you see from this budget, five-year budget, we still have $18 million of unfunded needs that's in that priority list. So as, going back to, we're trying to build capacity through some of these early retirements so that we can allocate those resources to our infrastructure needs.
Now, again, we're talking about approximately $15 million a year, you know, over this process here. What kind of plans do we have right now to generate the revenue to be able to address these needs?
We are definitely taking a look at all our options, revenue enhancements. I know the council has brought up a few that we're going to look into. You know, we have digital advertising, billboards that we're looking into. We're also looking on the economic development plan, strengthening our corridors to help bring in additional tax revenue. So it's a multi-pronged approach to getting additional revenue streams. But again, our expenditures continue to outpace our revenues by 8% every year. So it's a big challenge that we are, we're undertaking.
Could we use another term instead of new projects? Because again, it sounds like we're trying to add something. This is a needed project.
Yes, well taken, Mayor.
Any questions?
Okay, so just to summarize the two-year budget that is presented, that has been presented to you first at the study session on April 27, and now continuing on here. Here is the overall budget by, by fund type. So the one that we concentrate most on is the general fund. And here you have year one of revenues to expenditures. And like I mentioned, it is balanced. You'll see that the rest of the funds are not one-to-one, and that is simply because they are, they have a different and they have a different and specific revenue stream. And so we have, you know, fund balance within each of those funds to support the needs that have been articulated in the budget. So we're confident that with the fund balances that we have in hand and with the planned expenditures, not only for year one and year two, that the fund balances that are needed are indeed available or are projected to be available over the next couple of years. So here's year one, total revenues of about $110 million, two expenditures of about $127 million. So the delta of about $17 million is available in the beginning fund balance of each of those funds. Same for year two. We are anticipating $93.5 billion in revenues to $117 million in expenditures. Again, focusing on the general fund, the general fund has been balanced in year two as well. So the next steps, this is the first public hearing that we held specifically to provide transparency and to provide for enough time to obtain public input and to put it out to the community. On June 8th, we will bring back the entire budget and bring back any changes or any minor corrections that we might have, any corrections that we might have. And we will call them out in the staff report and ask council to approve the appropriations for year one, fiscal year '21, '22, and approve the plan for fiscal year '22, '23. So here is the recommended action that is laid before you in the agenda report. Conduct a public hearing, which we are holding right now, and continue the public hearing to June 8th for formal adoption.
Councilwoman Laura?
This concludes the presentation. We'll make ourselves available for questions.
You know, before, from a personal perspective, before we vote on the budget, June 8th?
June 8th.
I'd like to have a full discussion on the golf course.
Let's hold on on that because we have some speakers that want to speak on the budget here?
Yes.
So can we? Counsel? Can we call them?
Yes.
Okay, just let me remind our council people, we cannot comment, we cannot respond, okay, to their comments. So let's see, Mr. Guerra, Rudy, speaking on the budget?
Yes.
Sir, you have three minutes. Okay, we have our clock right there, okay? So you see my fist right here? That means one, okay?
Got it. Well, thank you, Mayor, and good evening to you and Mayor Protem and council members. Look, my name for the record is Rudy Carvalho with SEIU 721, and I represent some of the workers here in the city of Pico Rivera. First of all, I want to recognize and thank the workers, critical and essential workers here from the city yard, the parking recs department, and the city hall for their heroism, right? They've been working and, you know, risking their lives and their family lives to maintain the health and safety of the city during this historical pandemic. That actually has caused death, about a half a million or more Americans' deaths already. And so I want to make sure we recognize them. With that being said, despite these workers risking their lives and their family lives, unfortunately, we are here not to honor them for that, but in to increase their ranks. We are not here to give them any heroes pay or talk about heroes pay, which other government agencies and departments have provided for their workers. Unfortunately, we are here talking about the city administration proposing to cut these critical and essential worker positions. And the city is looking at, into contracting now and possibly contracting out these positions when they're empty. Currently, there's contractors that are doing work that we can do right now as well. These critical and essential positions need to be filled to maintain the critical and essential services, such as to keep the parks clean and safe, to keep illegal dumping under control, to keep our median islands back in shape, to eradicate the effects of homelessness, to enforce violations of housing and business codes that keep the community safe and clean. These are just a few things that need to be maintained in the city. More importantly, a lot of these workers that work for the city live in the city. It makes more economic sense to fill these critical and essential positions with Pico Rivera residents that will make the local economy more vibrant and improve the local communities. The city of Pico Rivera workers love their jobs, and they take their job seriously. This is not only a job for them, this is their career that they will retire, until they retire. They have a stake to make, to make sure that they do their job correctly. And that's why city workers are always better, dependable, and more efficient to keep the city safe and clean. Contractors, on the other hand, are there to do the job the cheapest and fastest possible way to minimize their costs. They don't have a vested interest in the community, but only to the bottom line and to keep their business afloat. We are asking that you, city council, not cut these essential and critical positions, but to keep them unfunded until the city can rehire, to fill those positions with city residents. We ask that the city leaders choose the city workers instead of contractors to maintain the health and safety for Pico Rivera residents. We ask that the city leaders choose to work with the city workers to create a plan to maintain and improve services for the city residents moving forward. And this is why we say this. The workers are experts in their fields, right? They're the ones that do the jobs. And the ones that do the jobs are the ones that understand how to do it and make it better. So it's time to listen to us, the city workers, that want to work with you to continue providing the best service for their city residents. That's what I have, and I hope you hear us out. Thank you for your time, and we look forward to working with you guys.
Thank you. Mr. George Rivera?
Honorable Mayor and members of the city council, my name is George Rivera, and I represent the full-time rank-and-file members of SEIU 721. During the past year, the majority of our members were classified as essential workers. Public Works worked throughout the pandemic, mowing, cleaning parks, maintaining buildings, and working on the center medians. Building inspectors and code enforcement officers continued to conduct inspections to ensure the public safety. We continue to contact street vendors and residents putting ourselves and our families at risk. Seeing the budget proposal, I thought to myself, this is how the city repays us. By cutting and eliminating 12 positions, 11 of which are in SEIU members. These positions, these positions do not have to be eliminated. They can easily be kept vacant and unfunded, the normal thing to do when there is uncertainty. We agree to the E-RIP with the understanding that some of those positions would be kept unfilled to save money, not eliminated. Our members already feel they are doing much more with less people. And yet, the city continues to cut positions. Now, this week, they posted new organizational charts showing reclassifications. Make no mistake, reclassifications are promotions. And when rank-and-file positions are vacant and to be filled, there is a recruitment process. These positions are not going through the recruitment process. Promotions are being handed to individuals. We would like to see the same recruitment process for all positions. Simply follow the guidelines and the rules and regulations. When positions are filled, when these positions are filled, the city plans on eliminating the positions at the lower level. This would result in elimination of more SEIU-represented positions, 17 total rank-and-file positions. It comes down to what you want to see in a budget. Eliminating these positions will affect city services in parks, the islands, in our facilities. They were, they will be a negative impact on response times. There will be added stress to current workforce. This, you need to know when you vote on this budget. Thank you.
Mr. Victor Ramos?
Hi, my name is Victor Ramos. I'm acting crew leader at the Public Works. And I'm here to basically state what we're dealing with. When we were hired originally, we were told, welcome to the family. Fast forward now, as my colleagues have said, we worked through COVID. We exposed ourselves, helped the public. And we see this proposal, and if you notice, there was only cuts on one department, you know? Like my colleague said, there's a double standard here when it comes down to hiring. And when we get positions of, sorry, I'm a little nervous. When there's positions open, we have to go through the recruitment process. We have to go through outside panel interviews. Why can't we do that across the board? If we want transparency, we want fairness, why can't we do that everywhere? Another thing that I have is, why are positions not going to be backfilled? Why are they going to be eliminated? That's not fair to us. That's not fair to our families. We love the city. We come every day, do our job, and that's the things we get. It's not fair. I want to clarify something that was said earlier, that one of the positions that's going to be eliminated or lowered down to a part-timer is our mechanic. Our mechanic was fixing our trucks, our tractors, our small equipment. And now there seems to be a disconnect when it comes down to the worker and what our job does and what other departments do. We are not part of the reclassification in any form, only supervisor level and up. When it comes down to our positions, it's totally different the way they're being approached. And that's where we have a problem. So with that said, I would like there to be transparency, clarity, be fair, do things straight across the board. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Laura? Your comments on the recommendation?
Got it. Thank you for all the hard work, Director Garcia. I really appreciate everything that you've done in terms of what you presented to us. But I do want to say that I will not be voting for the budget, or at least agreeing for the budget, on June 8th. Because I'd like to see a full discussion regarding the budget take place in terms of the enterprise fund, especially when it's about the golf course. I'd like, you know, I asked for 10 years of financial records regarding the golf course that were provided to me. And just prima facie, it seems like we're losing at least $250,000 a year. That has been inflated. It seems like maybe there's a $3 million loss over that time span. I understand the city manager wants to bring that discussion back for the end of June after we vote on the budget. But I'd like to have that discussion before we vote on that budget. Because that loss affects ultimately the budget in total. So I think that we're, I'd like to put the budget off for at least a meeting or two, and I'd like to have a full discussion of the golf course.
I'd like to hear a motion out of that.
I can do that at the good of the order. I can do that at the good of the order. Is that appropriate, counselor?
Whatever the pleasure is, the council, but I just want to make sure that the council's word, you're not approving the budget tonight?
No.
No, 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 for June 8th.
But you're looking to postpone the budget?
To have, yes, to have a full discussion of the golf course enterprise fund.
Are you looking to extend the period?
Because, Mayor, what then will happen in all likelihood is you're not going to have adopted a budget before the end of this fiscal year.
I mean, that's happened before, right?
It should be adopted by July 1st.
I understand. No, I understand what should be. But that's happened before, where the city council has not adopted a budget at the deadline, correct?
It is uncommon. I'll address it this way. But the reason why this matter is being presented to you tonight is just to give you an overview. You're not taking, tonight, you're not giving, taking any action whatsoever. And so hopefully, what can be provided to the council in terms of information between now and your next review of the budget in two weeks is that information that the council member is requesting. And at that time, if there is a desire to evaluate the enterprise funds and items such as that, that can also be discussed at that time. If you do not adopt a budget by the end of the fiscal year, then you will need to take special, take action on special resolutions to extend this year's budget on a pretty much a monthly basis to engage in appropriations to keep the city going forward.
I want to hear your proposal for it. You say there's a problem. Is there something that you?
Yeah, look, we hear, this is my problem. I hear from staff and admin that we want to run a conservative fiscal budget. There is a yearly $250,000 deficit from the golf course, every year for the past 10 years. Not only that, but when you look at selective years, they've, you know, previous councils have taken out $2.5 million from the general fund to offset deficits. We need to have that discussion about, before we vote on the budget. That's what I'm proposing.
Ken, I mean, I see what you're saying, and I know we've discussed this golf course extensively. And quite frankly, I mean, it's like I mentioned earlier, it's a philosophical difference. It's a park, or it's not a park, you know? But nonetheless, I think the discussion that you're asking for can be done at our next budget meeting as we can analyze any other fund that we should discuss. So I don't see the need of postponing or pushing and not adopting a budget on time. When we can have that discussion in full detail and the conversation, then, on it or not.
No, and I appreciate that. My only hesitation would be, ultimately, if we choose to close the golf course ahead of time, hypothetically speaking, that will change our fiscal standing.
Let me ask you, in terms of what we're seeing, Mayor, I didn't see anything about the golf course anyway. So is it relevant to this situation right now?
No, we did a presentation, the previous one, that we did talk about the enterprise funds. But as far as today, the focus was on the master control position.
No, no, I respectfully disagree. It's part of the discussion because it's an enterprise fund, okay? If you look at, here, fiscal year '21 and '22, the largest deficits come out of our fiscal, our enterprise funds. Now, I get it, the majority of that's made up of water expenditures, because we're going to spend for our infrastructure. But when you look at the enterprise fund of the golf course, that's a yearly $250,000 deficit. I just want a discussion of it. I think it's relevant, and I think it falls within the purview because it's part of the budget. To say it's not part of the budget is, you're just making stuff up.
You can make a motion to have that meeting, okay, to have that kind of thing.
Yeah, so, so let's do this. So I'd like to make a motion to bring back a full discussion of the golf course, of the fiscal standing for the past 10 years, or if you want to go back longer, to determine whether or not the golf course is a drag on the budget. You know, I wouldn't treat my money that way. If this was my money, I would have closed that thing a long time ago or would have re-diversified it. So I think it's prudent, you know, it's our fiduciary responsibility to have this discussion. So that's my motion at the next council meeting.
Well, once again, can we have that discussion at the budget meeting?
Well, actually, you know, we had the city manager say that he was going to make a presentation at the end.
Yeah, I was, I had.
Will that affect the?
I discussed to do a presentation at the end of June. I mean, we can have a conversation at the next council meeting. I mean, that's fine, but I don't think.
I think we want more than a conversation, okay?
Yeah, what I meant was an in-depth analysis of the enterprise fund as it relates to the golf course.
So do you want to make a motion that we, in the next council meeting, that we?
Yes, I formally want to make a motion that at the next council meeting, we have an in-depth discussion on the enterprise fund, the golf course.
Do we have a second?
I second.
And that is in addition to bringing back the budget?
Yes.
Or not?
I'll leave the motion as it is.
Are we done?
Yes, we're done. Thank you.
We have a motion and a second. We need a roll call, Mr. Mayor.
No, we have a motion.
We have a motion from Councilmember Laura to bring back at the next budget discussion the presentation on the enterprise fund, specifically the golf course.
And there was a second.
And that was seconded by Councilmember Laura.
We don't need to.
I'm sorry, Councilmember Lutz.
So we don't need a vote?
We do need a vote.
Okay, let's do it.
Let's have a vote.
But I would like to add to this. Councilmember Laura is citing $250,000 deficit. We have not received, I have not received this information. So if we could have this information prior to the information that he is citing, that he has received, that none of us, or myself, I don't know if any of my other colleagues have received.
So let's have a roll call vote on it. There's a second on this. Some motion already.
It's not on the, it's not on the presentation tonight. It's to bring back something at your next meeting. Let's have a vote.
Councilmember Camacho?
Sure.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Mary Lyas?
Yes.
Mary Elias?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And this item will be carried, the budget itself will also be carried over to the June?
8th.
8th meeting. Thank you.
Do we need to vote on that?
No, that's part of the staff's, no, that's fine.
But we still have, we're still on the same agenda.
Still on the same.
Still on track, so far.
Can we go to public comments?
Well, hold on, hold on. We're still on this subject. We haven't, we're not done completely on this item. We haven't, we haven't.
Council, what do we need to do?
Continue public hearing.
Well, I mean, the, unless there's other desire to have a discussion on the budget issue, the recommendation was to continue the public hearing to June 8th, which will be what staff will do.
Well, I do have some comments, Mayor, if I may, if we're going to already conclude that, and I thought we were not done yet. A little confusing here. I just wanted to make some comments relating to your budget. Again, staff, thank you very much for bringing this forward. We've done two-year budget before, some time ago, and when we did a two-year budget, we had some fiscal challenges in front of us, and it's warranted. I think the fact that we now look at having a potential balanced budget, it's, I say potential because it's here on paper, it looks great, and I think it's the right direction we're moving for, and that's a testament of the work that we've all done here to get that, to have a $2 million surplus in that period and dedicated to economic development shows the priority that this council has in making sure that we're looking to do revenue enhancements. And I said it many, many times over, over the years, it's a lot easier to go through light items and cut than it is to do some revenue enhancements. And that really takes some critical thinking and ability for us to work together in unison to make that happen. The CIP projects, you know, five-year plan, it's great, we still have a lot of unfunded ones, but nevertheless, I think the community will be proud of the fact that we have many infrastructure projects that they're going to see in the next couple of years, and I think it's beneficial to the community as a whole, and even consist, the CIP projects consist and align with the economic opportunity that we have, and we're moving forward on that. You know, I can understand the reclassifications when it comes to organizations, reorganizations, and it happens often, and that's the purview of the city manager, as we ask them to do. I just want to point out that, I mean, I just, you know, as I mentioned, I think I'm still not convinced on the elimination of positions as it relates to the value to the organization versus having them vacant, but being able to fill them, being able to fill them easier than to recreate them. So I would like to see the budget that is presented to us not have elimination of any position until we figure out a little bit better more as to what the best approach is for the organization as a whole. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Any comments?
I just wanted to comment in terms of, we do support our staff from SEIU to management as well. I think, I saw we had some individuals out front that were in protest today, I believe, regarding this issue, and I would like to say thank you to the speakers that came out this evening, they waited several hours. But I think it would also be valuable to, we have a labor negotiations process, we have a team, so utilize those three hours in addition, not just to stand outside and hold your sign, but also to meet with our team. I myself, last year, made myself available for a standing meeting, two union representatives to give us suggestions, not just to hear complaints, but tell us what, what things you would like instead of the suggestions that are being presented forward to us. So I wanted to comment that we appreciate the voice, but I think we really need to sit down and discuss this in a calm and solution-based manner. But I think that so far, this looks like a good budget to me. When I came in, we had a $9 million deficit, I recall, and this balanced budget is looking, looking good to me. Thank you.
Member Lutz?
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I want to commend the entire city staff and the Director Garcia for taking on the project, and our city manager, and assistant city manager, and the rest of the city, that you took the bull by the horns. And as Mayor Protem mentioned, we went from anticipated $9 million deficit to approximately $2 million deficit, and if everything goes according to plan, according to the strategy that you've developed for our city, we're going to be at a $2 million surplus. So God willing, we'll be in a good position, stay the course, and thank you again for all your hard work. Thank you.
On that note, can we close the?
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, that would conclude item number three. It then would be appropriate to move forward with consent calendar items. Yes, consent calendar items. These would include both the City Council Water Authority items, these are items four, five, six, and seven. And it would be appropriate to entertain a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Have a motion?
So move as recommended.
I'll make a second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 All against? Does that help you, Ms. Clerk?
Motion carries.
Okay.
Mayor, I did want to mention, would you have one public comment?
Yes.
From Mr. Sanchez.
I'm going to get to it. We have, I don't want to say one comment, I just, one exclusive one, okay? Just, today we have a comment from Mr. Sanchez, and this is in regard to, it's getting worse, and the tolerance is getting scarce. Yes, the Rosemead Boulevard CIP pavement rehabilitation and trench botch repair, permanent fix is now planned and out for bid, but when will it start? Initially targeted for January 2021, then changed to March, now June. See, and the public comments? Consent calendar items? Councilmembers, if you have any comments on the listed items, please raise your hands so that I may recognize you.
We're devoted.
We went to the regular agenda.
Especially, Mayor, we did, we kind of went a little bit out of order, so at this time, we're on the regular agenda, item number eight.
On the regular agenda?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, regular agenda, number eight, the authorization approving issuance of pension obligation bonds and authorization to file validation action.
Mayor, City Council, I have my Director Angelina Garcia to do the staff report. As you recall, last time, we had had this item before us. We have to bring this item back. It was our understanding that what was before council has to be approved as such, and so I have staff here, we also have our consultants in the audience to answer any further questions. Angelina?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council. As you recall, at the April 27th, 2021 meeting, we did present to you a strategy for pension obligations with recommendation to authorize or initiate the validation process that is required to go through the courts system. There were some follow-up items that were requested by Mayor Elias, and so we, we brought with us this evening our counsel from Stradling, as well as our municipal financing team headed by Mike Williams, here behind me, to answer any questions you might have. I will point out a correction to page three, that you'll find needed on page three of six. It mentions enclosure seven, and it's actually enclosure four. So just a, just a correction on that. And so now, rather than take you through the presentation again that you've already seen, we'll open it up to questions specific to the GFOA risks that were mentioned. As the mayor requested, we did bring forward the responses, written responses by Columbia Capital, and it is in enclosure four. So now we'll open it up to any questions the council might have.
You know, again, I saw the, you know, I saw the presentation, there was a lot of time and effort in it, and obviously, the whole issue of bonds in Pico Rivera is, is something that we have to, you know, we have to think about. You know, the last bond issue that we had in Pico Rivera raised property taxes for some $500, some, you know, a couple of thousand and so on. But my experience with an increase in, in property taxes was, when I was running for city council, I was walking the precinct, and I was on the north side, and I ran into a gentleman, and he was having a yard sale. He was having a yard sale of very nice furniture, it's just right there, and I'm passing by, and I asked him, I said, you know, how are you doing? And he goes, oh, not so good. I haven't been able to reach my, my increase in my property taxes. And I said, what? And he said, well, you know, there's been an increase in my property taxes, so I'm going to have to sell my front room furniture. And, you know, that really, you know, that really put the situation right, right in front of me in terms of, and, you know, so I asked him, I said, you know, and he thought it was the city, okay? He thought it was the city, but district, you know, we're all affected by it. And I said, what would you like me to do? And he said, would you please ask if we can get an additional yard sale, so then I'll be able to pay my taxes? Okay? So that, you know, that's the situation that we're in, in terms of Pico Rivera situation. I, I read through the bond, okay, and in page 15, this was the consolidated one, there was an item here that I, you know, I, I missed, in that the validation effort also included the constitutional debt limit, need for judicial validation. In other words, the bond situation is going to require that we circumvent this constitutional article here. Now, the California Constitution, Article 16, okay, Public Finance, Section 18, let me read it. No county, city, town, township, board of education, or school district will incur any indebtedness or liability in any manner for any purposes exceeding one year the income and revenue provided for each year. Now, I estimate that the bond situation is going to be close to financing $70,000, $80,000, so it, you know, that fits, you know, without the assent of two-thirds of the voters of the public entity voting on the election to be held for the purpose. Now, I am not going to in any way support the circumvention of that situation. We have to put it out to the voters. We have to put it out to the voters, and that is my, that is my position in terms of the bond situation. You can go forward, and if it's a great idea, you can sell the public, but it has to go to the public for, for two-thirds approval.
So we'll ask either Vanessa, Vanessa or Mike, to address the, the difference between general obligation bonds and these pension obligation bonds, which are essentially refinancing existing debt, and just to touch on the, on the aspects of that.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, and members of the City Council. My name's Vanessa Legband. I'm a shareholder at the law firm of Stradling, Yaca, Carlson, and Routh, and we represent the city as bond counsel in connection with the proposed pension obligation bonds. You are correct, in California, the California Constitution includes the constitutional debt limit, which says that cities and other cities, counties, and school districts cannot incur debt obligations that are essentially payable in future years. There are three exceptions to the constitutional debt limit that have been created by the courts in California. Probably the most well-known is the lease revenue exception, and so all of the lease revenue bonds and the certificates of participation that are based on lease, leaseback financing, that's one of the constitutional exceptions, this, sorry, one of the court-created exceptions to the constitutional debt limit. Revenue bonds is another one, special fund, so when a water district issues bonds secured by its own water revenues, that's another exception. The third exception is liability, an obligation based on statute required by law. So the, all of the pension obligation bonds issued by cities and counties in California are based on the legal theory that the city's obligation to pay retirement benefits to CalPERS based on the CalPERS statutes and the CalPERS contract is an obligation imposed by law, once the city has entered into that contract with CalPERS and with its employees. No, to my knowledge, no court in California, no higher-level court in California, appellate court, has weighed in on that one way or the other. And that is why, for all of the pension obligation bond issuances in California, we bring them to a trial court for a validation action, which is authorized under California Code of Civil Procedure, for exactly this purpose. There's a legal theory that is, just hasn't been tested by a real fight-'em-out lawsuit and an appellate decision upholding or shooting it down. Angelina is also correct that it, the pension obligation bond is a bond instead of another form of indebtedness, because cities are under state law authorized to, to issue bonds in order to refund an existing obligation. So connecting the dots, the CalPERS obligation is an obligation that we believe is an obligation imposed by law, so not subject to the constitutional debt limit, and the city is issuing bonds under state statute and the government code to refinance that obligation. That being said, you are correct, it's an exception to the constitutional debt limit, and we do, as bond counsel, on all of the pension obligation deals that we work on, require that the city ask a trial court through a validation proceeding to confirm that we can move forward with the bond issuance.
I've read, and I've researched, other cities that have gone forward with the pension program, but not with the exception of, you know, of the constitutional article right there. They spent six months with stakeholder meetings, just trying to educate the public in terms of what it is. So my, my position is, or what I would like to put into motion, is that we separate the two, okay? This, you know, we've already talked about going forward in terms of the bond situation, but that we do not use the resources, okay, to finagle a way to get around public participation and openness and accountability. So I make a motion?
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
If I may. So, so again, just to clarify, the difference between, you've made it clear, the difference between a general obligation bond and a pension obligation bond. The act of refinancing, we have CalPERS unfunded liability, it's growing and growing, and all cities are facing with this, so there's, other than to generate a lot of money and to put millions of dollars into a fund to pay that, an obligation that, a commitment that was done decades ago, right? And, but we have, by law, we have to pay it, one way or another, we have to pay it. By refinancing, it's, we're not imposing a new tax on the residents, right? They're not going to see a tax on their property, they're not going to see a sales tax, it's not, it's just the refinance, it's like we would refinance our mortgages, correct? So, so just, that's correct, I just want to hear from you.
That is correct. As opposed to a typical general obligation bond, which proposes to the voters and gets their approval to levy an ad valorem property tax, an additional property tax to pay debt financing.
And from what I'm understanding, it seems like the, the courts provided this vehicle for us under the CalPERS dynamic and challenges that CalPERS has held, has held in all cities in California, to be able to do other actions, still meet an obligation, but give us that opportunity to breathe a little better and not move all our general fund. opportunity to breathe a little better and not move all our general fund monies, if you will, and cut the services of our city. Is that a yes?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I would like to make a motion that we separate the items, we separate the procedure and going forward with the, with the bond situation, but, you know, that we review and discuss the circumvention of the constitutional article. Do I have a second?
Just for clarification of your, of your motion, you want a discussion?
That's the only way that I could put it on the agenda, is first through discussion.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, just for clarif, are you saying to adopt the resolution that's presented, but, because it's going to take time?
Well, no, I don't know, because when you take a look at the recommendation that was made, the recommendation was made to pursue it, but never the situation of having to circumvent the article. The recommendation that we voted on was staff recommends the city council authorize the issuance of pension bonds and approve the related documents, authorize staff to file the required court validation authority, staff to work with the municipal advisor, okay? But it did not include circumventing the constitutional article. So that's why, again, I don't call it, you know, just amending the, I'm talking about making it two separate issues.
I'll turn to bond counsel, but I think in her explanation, her presentation is that with all due respect, that this does not circumvent the constitutional, I think she agreed that what you cited is correct.
Yes, it does.
But there are exceptions to that rule.
And you, if you read the exceptions, what they talk about is that they talk about school, you know, repairs and so on, and the last term, in terms of the obligation itself, is questionable. Because what you're doing is that you're converting debt, debt that is negotiable, okay, into an obligation, all right? And that's a situation that I would not like my residents to be able to, to deal with, because again, that becomes a situation where, you know, we lose.
Mayor, if I, with your example, I see it a little differently. You talked about debt and you talked about obligation. The way I see it is where it's obligation and obligation. We're already obligated to pay that money. What we're doing is just refinancing into a new obligation.
Well, that's not the issue.
Okay.
Okay, the issue is the approval by the residents. It's not the mechanics of the, and that's why I want to separate it, okay? Is that, again, we already approved, okay, this, but what I'd like to do is that I would like to make, I did make the motion, and I'm hoping for a second, that we could view, okay, the circumventing of the California Constitution, and I can call it circumventing it.
So, I just want to clarify, you want to have a discussion on the circumvention of the California Constitution?
Yes, because in any situation, we need the vote.
I'm sorry.
We need the vote of the public.
So, I mean, let's have the conversation we're having here right now.
Well, give me a second, and we'll have a conversation.
No, like, we're in the subject right now, well, let's continue the conversation about that matter. Yeah, I mean, I see what you're saying as far as the circumventing, but the courts give us the authority, and hence the residents have elected us to give us the authority to make these decisions on their behalf, whether we agree with them or not, and, but I think, you know, nobody wants to circumvent anything or bypass the people's right, but I think, as I stated, this is not a new debt, this is an already an obligation, and we're just trying to refinance to save the residents' money.
But it's not as simple as that. It's not as simple as that, okay, when you, when you talk about it, all right? The point that I'm talking about right now is that we need, we need to put it out to a vote.
And I'd like to second your motion to have a separate discussion on the legality of the circumvention of the state constitution in regards to this matter.
So you want to test the legality of the California Constitution?
No, no, I'm seconding your discussion. You want to bring it back to a future council meeting to?
I need to bring it up, to put it on the agenda, and this is the method that we have to use.
Yeah, and I'm seconding that you want to have a discussion of it.
Since, I apologize, if I may, just ask a question, since we do have representatives from Stradling and the financial advisor, are there any further clarifications that we can, that we can provide on the difference between the validation and the circumvention?
Let me try and address and summarize what I think the position is. The mayor is of the position and the belief that this must be presented to the voters before it can be approved. We've heard bond counsel saying that that is not her view, correct?
That is correct.
Okay. It comes back to the council because, you know, you're the ones that make the decisions. We tell, we advise the council and give our views as attorneys, and what you're hearing from, I'm not a bond counsel, so I'm not, you know, I'm a city attorney. And I've done a number of these in other cities where there is no vote of the people. But the mayor is of the belief and would like to see the voters weigh in before he approves the, this item. I should also note, and I'll turn to bond counsel, if this matter was approved, will this, will there be a new tax imposed upon the residents of Pico Rivera?
No.
Only if they fail to pay the obligation, huh?
No, sir.
Where are we, where do you get, is there a plan to have an alternate source? Because I understand in Whittier, what they're using is that their alternative source of revenue, if they default on it, is the sales tax, okay? And the other 14 cities are basically using the increased sales tax as a, as a way of being able to leverage the situation. We don't have that opportunity.
I believe that there, I believe that you may be referring to the transportation sales tax bonds, that some other cities are issuing.
No, I'm not. I, I'm talking about the sales tax, okay? As again, the revenue, okay, that is going to be available to them to pay down to avoid any tax, you know, on the bond situation.
The proposed pension obligation bonds that are before you for approval tonight are not payable from any specific funding source of the city. They are a general fund obligation, an unconditional obligation of the city to pay from any legally available fund of the city. It will not be secured by any, any property tax or sales tax specifically, and they will not authorize the city to levy any new tax.
We're, we're talking to the underwriter, okay? I would like to be able to get, you know, an opinion from the outside in terms of this, because again, I do have a problem with, again, you know, the method that she's talking about in terms of the alternatives we have. We have $72 million that we have to raise, okay, that we have to raise just to get our clean water and infrastructure, okay? The whole idea, okay, the whole idea is that the only revenue source that we're going to have to pay this obligation is going to be sales tax. Or, excuse me, it's going to have to be property tax.
Mayor, this is our bond counsel, this is not our underwriter. One note, that by moving forward on this, that we do, we will realize a $15 million savings over 25 years, and that is the way of leveling, leveling out our payment plan in future years. So, again, it's, it's a recommendation to council to take the matter?
I'm not talking about the mechanics, again. I'm not talking about the mechanics. All I'm saying is that it has to go to a vote. That's it, a vote.
So, so we still, we still have this obligation, right, and as you stated, our obligation today, if we don't meet it, it comes from a general fund. So the obligation already exists, so we're not adding, so what we're saying is, again, it's a refinance, right? It's saving $15 million in the course of 25 years.
I'm just saying that we have to put it out to a vote and let the residents vote on this.
And so the question then is not really a matter of, am I, what I'm hearing, is not a matter of getting more information, but rather whether we want to take this to the vote?
That's, yeah, that's exactly, that's what.
And is this even warranted to take it to the vote in this particular, the POVs and stuff? And have you, in your experience, seen any city take this matter to a vote?
I am not aware of any cities that have, no, put an, put an item on an election for a pension obligation bond. The process that I'm aware of, cities and counties going through, authorization of the bonds, then submission of the, the question to a trial court through a validation proceeding, acting, asking the trial court to enter a judgment stating that the bonds are valid obligations of the city.
And this action today, if we were to vote on it, support it, goes through, again, that process?
Yes.
And the courts will determine whether we are correct or not, and they can very well say no to us, and everything else is mute. But the courts have established this procedural on the POVs for this purpose, because, again, that's the obvious procedure. Because, I mean, in concept, I would agree that, I mean, any additional tax on our community or any fee, we should make sure we engage our community, but I don't see how this one falls under that in particular, based on the fact, on our legal bond counsel attorney telling us the procedure, the obligations, a commitment, a risk, and what we do, we not do. So, I clearly understand what we need to do here. I don't need more discussion on this item, other than to decide whether, you know, be the, maybe the first city in California to take this item to people, to vote on, something that they were probably confused about. But, again.
Mayor, if I may, weigh in. I just want to clarify and summarize our entire discussion here. Doing this approval for this resolution authorizing the issuance of bonds, we're refinancing $40 million. What will ultimately be the final figure, the final debt balance? Usually it's three times, four times the original amount? What is it?
I think principal and interest is stated at 72 million over that stretch. And so the part that we're refinancing right now is basically what is stated in our last Calpers valuation. That changes every year, that goes up every year. Whether we pay in the normal cost and the obligation that they ask us to pay every July continues to go, go up every year. Should we choose not to go down this course and issue the pension obligation bonds to try to mitigate future increases, then the ultimate result will probably be, based on all of the analysis that has been done, a larger unfunded actuarial liability bill every year over that same course. So that's where the $15 million worth of savings comes in.
Got it. And as bond counsel mentioned, repayment of this is not exclusive to property taxes, it can be paid from any source.
Yes, and so.
The burden is not necessarily, or technically, on the backs of our taxpayers.
It's general obligation bond, I mean, I'm sorry, it's general purpose revenues that support either the payment of the unfunded actuarial liability, the Calpers payment, or the pension obligation bonds. So we're paying it from the existing revenue, general purpose revenues in the general fund. So there is not, we are not increasing any tax. We cannot increase, increase property taxes unless we go to the vote of the people, and we cannot raise sales taxes either. So.
We can't raise sales taxes?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Until, unless we go to the vote of the people.
Yes, okay. We can't raise sales taxes because we're at the peak, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, we're capped.
We're capped.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. So, the benefits, my understanding of this is a benefit would be that we are refinancing at a predictable rate, lower rate than the current Calpers rate over the next 25 years.
Based on the history of how Calpers has increased their unfunded actuarial liability obligation year over year, yes.
So similarly, like, if I, a individual homeowner, I own a home and I had a variable interest rate?
Yes.
You can't predict, and it might go up, might go down, but it's been going up. This is kind of setting a, refinancing our obligation bonds to set a variable, I mean, a set rate over the next 25 years.
A set rate for that $40 million unfunded obligation. Now, if there are future layers, that's where the pension policy comes in, right? So we're strategizing, this is not just, you know, looking at that $40 million and saying, this is going to solve this problem. This is better structuring financially the entire pension obligation with a strategy of putting in the pension obligation bonds, putting in a pension policy, and diverting some of the savings towards a Section 115 trust to set aside dollars to pay for the future increases in the UAL. So it's a multi-pronged approach that, that attempts to further stabilize our ongoing pension obligations.
Thank you.
If we should move on the recommendation of the city here, are we, I just, two points of clarification, City Manager Harmoni, are we hiring a bond underwriter at this point in time?
No, we're not hiring a bond underwriter at this time. In fact, if down the road after the 90-day process happens, we could still back out of this, and for a number of reasons, whether there is additional information that's brought to council, or maybe the interest rates has risen where it's not economically feasible. So there's still that opportunity to do that.
You jumped to my second question, which is good, which was, we can choose to end this process if something changes. This is not the finality of it by today's motion.
No, the only thing would be on the hook is for the legal fees if we move forward, so.
Okay, so having said that, I'd like to make the motion that we authorize approving the issuance of pension obligation bonds and authorize, and the authorization to file validation action.
I second that.
Can I hear that? Can you give it to me again?
Yes, sir. I just basically read item number eight, which is the motion to authorize approving the issuance of pension obligation bonds.
I'm going to ask you, because I had a motion on the floor.
I second in your motion.
You're going to say?
Or the discussion, or discussion.
You heard a second, okay?
Yes.
Go ahead.
So, so, but I'm moving on the motion that's before us, on item number eight, regarding the authorization of approving the issuance of pension obligation bonds and authorization to file validation action.
And I got a second.
That's to adopt the resolution?
That's to adopt the resolution, thank you.
Councilmember Camacho?
Yes.
Councilmember Laura?
Yes.
Councilmember Lutz?
Yes.
Mayor Proton, Dr. Sanchez?
Yes.
Mary Elias?
No.
Thank you.
Ready for the next one? Okay, number nine, discuss the direction regarding the Spanish translation of the profile publication.
Yes, Mayor, City Council, at this time, I'll turn it over to Director Pamela Ugarm for a discussion on this item.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, thank you, City Manager as well, Honorable Mayor and Council. On April 13th, I brought to you four options to review for possible Spanish translation cost associations, and at that time, you directed me to go back and look at option number three. So today, I am here to give you the results of looking into option number three, and then present you a few more other results, because when we reviewed option number three, we found that option number three really wasn't a viable, possible solution for the city. Option number three, which is what you had asked us to look for, was using our in-house translation, the individuals who are qualified and paid for by the city to write and translate Spanish. At this time, we have two qualified certified translators on our city staff, and they're in the Public Works Department. One is a building inspector and the other is in, like I said, Public Works, and their day-to-day duties don't allow them to do the amount of time that it would take to translate the profile every single, every single month. It's very time-consuming. So, what I did was, we went back and we relooked at option number four, which was having it full, fully translated, but contracting out the, the Spanish contract, the Spanish part in-house. Now, when we looked at, when we brought this to you on April, April 13th, we were under the assumption that we would be able to do it in 10 issues. So when, the ones I'm presenting to you, I need to, you to realize that everything I'm presenting to you right now is six issues. So if we translate into Spanish, a full translation, we go immediately from a 10-issue per year to six. to six. And that's in whichever format you like, but we're going to be losing four issues. So on that note, we'll look at option number four A and four B. Now, what I'd like, if you could, Cynthia, if you could help me, you had asked to look, what would it cost in black and white? So, or to look at lesser, the lesser quality of paper? We looked into that, and we can give you each a copy, so you can feel it as well. Going to black and white only, only deducts approximately $750 per, per session. So it's really not terribly cost prohibitive, you would say, a bit of money, but if you look at it compared to the color versions that I provided, that I'm going to provide for you today, it really, it really takes it down a notch, and our community is definitely used to having it in color and having it on the nicer paper. Going to the, going to the lesser pound paper doesn't lower the price. So I just wanted to let you know that. So it's the same price to stick with the, with the nicer paper, nicer quality. Now, if you look at what we did for you today too also, this is actually the cover for June, and we had it translated into Spanish utilizing Google Translate. Then we had people look at it in Google Translate, and some of the words are not accurate. It doesn't, it doesn't translate word for word. It doesn't get the connotations that you want, or the, you know, the thought processes completely. So you take a big risk if you use Google Translate as your only source of translation. So we're opting out of that, and we believe that we should pay for a professional translator. Now, four A keeps it in-house, and it would be approximately $56,760 added to the budget. That would be black and white. Four B would be full translation in-house and keep it color. Now, five is a completely different option. It's outsourcing it altogether. It's giving everything to a contracted vendor, having them really package the story, package the marketing, do everything for us, and do the translation. And we, we got those numbers, and it's $103,350. So it's really quite, quite more expensive, and they came up with the same timeline as we did. We did not give them our timeline that we had, we had gone through with our own staffing. They came to us and said, we think we can only do four, maybe six, maybe six issues of your profile if everything's on time. Everybody gives every article to us on time. And that's kind of, you know, everybody has to meet all the deadlines, and there's a lot of moving parts when you're doing the profile, and that's something that our team does really well. They assemble this like a puzzle piece, they work with all the directors, they work with all of the staff in every single department, and every single month, they pull off this beautiful piece of artwork, I would call it. So, those are the options I wanted to share with you for your, for your choice. We also are doing a community survey right now, and one of the questions in the survey is, would you like to see the profile in full translation? So there's an option, if you'd like to wait on this item, that we could bring back it again, and at least have the data from you for, to present to you from the residents' perspective. But one other thing I also wanted to share with you while you're looking at it, if you look at the Spanish version, the print will be smaller, because it takes a lot more words to translate it into Spanish, and so the only concern people have had, my eyesight is not that great, but for our senior community, the font size is quite small. So that's just something, something to notice. No matter what, you will always have smaller font size for the Spanish version as you would to the English version.
I, I don't understand the, the assessment portion of it. Is it going to be in Spanish also?
Oh, there's two options, absolutely, a full, a full-
But you're talking about, you know, going out to the public and finding out what they-
Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay.
The community survey?
Okay, it, from an economic standpoint, it doesn't make sense to me, okay? Because what you do right now is that, you have to understand right now that Pico Rivera is a news desert, is a news desert. If there's any information like this right here, the county COVID, okay? Now, if somebody speaks Spanish or reads Spanish, they're not going to be able to get the information, all right? What I do is that, I have students and parents, okay, that have basically made this an issue, you know, with me and said, you got to get it, because we have to learn what's happening. We don't know when the trash is going to be picked up, we don't know when we're supposed to clean this, and, because again, what happens is, this gets thrown in the trash, because they don't understand it, okay? So, you know, I understand that you're talking about the cost, but you have to look at it from the economics costs of it, okay? Is it, is it really a cost? What are we giving up? What are we giving up when we spent this money? What are we giving up?
Is that a rhetorical question, or are you-
What are we giving up if we do this in Spanish?
That's not my position to say. I just provided you the options.
Okay, excuse me?
Yeah, yeah, Mayor, these are just options for council to move forward.
I, I, I understand that, okay? I understand it. But I'm just explaining to you, okay, because she mentioned going out and getting a survey, whether they want this or not.
Yeah, it was a-
If I'm, if I get the survey in English, I'm going to say, I don't need it.
Yeah, no, understood. I believe it would be in Spanish, but again, this is up to council if they, we have presented options in here, and that's just another option if council wants to consider.
I have a question. Can you remind me, what are, what is our current amount per the year? I know we're publishing 10 of them in color, English only. What is the current cost?
That.
I think you presented it at the last presentation, but I don't remember, I don't see it in the memo right now.
You know what, I'm sorry, I don't have that. I can get it for you, though.
Okay. But it would significantly be more to keep the 10, 10 issues fully translated in color?
There's no opportunity to do 10. If we do, if we do full translation, whether in-house or a contracted vendor, it goes down to six. And the contracted vendor said, that's if everything goes right. I mean, so they, they were really saying four to six.
Okay. Mayor, if I may? Okay, a couple of questions. I'm looking at a lot of things here, and I'm already doing the easy fixes in my head. If we look at the Spanish, it takes a lot more words to explain the same thing in English, for example. In Spanish, the suggestion was to take the type to nine-point rather than the 11-point, and for, for the wording, the paragraphs. I think the easy fix would be to make the headline a little smaller, and the picture of the vaccine, basically, the pictures and the headlines make them a little smaller, then hence keeping the body of the paragraphs at 11, to keeping it the same size as the rest of the wording in, in the English version. So to me, that's an easy fix. That's what the illustrator can take care of in, in minutes. I don't see that as a problem. If we go now to the actual summary here, and we're looking at the per-cost fiscal year, that's $61,200 for option four B, is that $61,200 in addition to the normal cost?
Well, thank you to Mr. Castorino who came. Our, our cost right now is $34,900. So that would, it would be an additional, pardon me, it would be $34,900 minus the 61, so.
Okay, okay, so-
Approximately like $28,000 more.
Okay, so in essence, it would be almost double?
Yes.
Okay, so, put it in Spanish and in English, it would almost double. How would it fold? How would the magazine fold, I'm curious? Would it fold with one inside the other, or would it be two separate issues sent with two postages, doubling the postage?
My understanding is that we would, we would figure out which household wants English and which household wants Spanish. I don't believe we would send them both. Is that correct, Gabe? Or would we be sending them both?
If it's on postage, it'll be, that's both, just like-
Okay.
We're going to send the June profile with the water quality report. It's going to be incorporated into the profile. It'll be eight pages, essentially.
Eight pages, okay.
Thank you, Gabe, sorry about that.
So just be folded as eight pages. Okay.
Which is why the postage went up. So I apologize for not, not remembering that.
I think this is viable, I think it's necessary, and the graphic issues can be resolved in minutes, so that the type, the words can be the same size in English and Spanish, just reducing the size of the headlines and the pictures. I'm, I'm, I'm for this, put simply.
Mayor? Also? We have another, another publication that we do as well for the Parks and Recs, the recorder for seasonal, for the programs. I know we didn't do one because of COVID the last seasons, but when were we going to create that one?
We have it budgeted for fall, and then we have it budgeted, I believe we have two budgeted for next fiscal year.
And if we're going on the same concept, should, now we'd be translating that document as well?
It's, it's at your purview, of course, if you'd like that translated.
Which, again, at a cost, but again, if we're going to go that route, we need to look at all our publications, and that's a really nice publication that we do. I, I, you know, I supported the item, I, I think in concept, this is, you know, something that we need to, you know, cater to our audience. I guess, looking at this report now, I have a couple of concerns, and that is, you know, when you're saying that we're going to create four to eight pages, and based on the report, there's going to be a reduction in stories as well, so we'll be, you know, we won't have enough space to, to put as many stories as we currently do, is that correct, based on?
Yeah, that's correct.
We got to really pick and choose, and I know there was a time where we were working with the school district, and they were putting announcements in the back, and, and, and we were kind of, it was kind of almost like the education page, if you will, it was the back page, but obviously, that opportunity won't even exist anymore, because we're going to be limited just from what we choose. Second, the big concern I have is, if, you know, as to the mayor's point, which I would agree, you know, is that, that always that challenge of getting information to our residents, and we got the monthly profile, or 10 per year. We send out all the means, I'm looking forward through the 311 system, we can directly send information directly to those who sign up, but from going from 10 issues to six issues, I'm trying to kind of now weigh in, the, the, the value of translating to Spanish outweigh the value of, of having more issues, which in essence, it's more information as being provided. So it's like, we're, we have to give, and I'm concerned that six issues versus 10, we're really going to keep more residents in the dark as far as information. So, I mean, if we're going to do this, let's do this right, and somehow, some way, let's keep it at 10, let's keep it in color, let's make sure we do proper translation. I've done a lot of marketing in my past, and, you know, format is not as easy as, as women point out, especially when the context of the story and, and pictures. And this was an award-winning at one time, we were getting awards for this profile, the content, and Gabriel, I mean, you've been instrumental in, in, in your team to putting this together, which I, kudos to you. So, right, what I'm having concerns now is going from 10 issues to six issues. I like the concept, I think we should, we need to cater, but let's be consistent throughout, but eliminating four issues is a reduction of information as a whole. So I'm kind of now wondering, trying to find the value, so I'd rather just, if we're going to spend the money, let's do it right, and let's put the necessary budget for it, and, and do it right, and not eliminate, but there's more cost. Thank you, Mayor.
I've studied a number of ancient languages, and I can tell you that Google Translate never works. It would have made homework a whole lot easier.
It's good for the phone.
Yeah, right. It misses the idioms. You know, I agree with Councilmember Camacho, if we're going to do it, we need some way fit in at least maybe 10, we need to get back to 10 issues. Even eight would be a stretch, I think it would be a compromise that I'd be willing to make, but he, Councilmember Camacho brought out some good points. He, he brought out, hey, the goal is to expand our reach and to expand information for our residents, but we run the fine line of now leaving them somewhat in the dark with six issues. Maybe it's a hybrid model, whereby, you know, so many months are done in-house, and maybe two months are outsourced, and, and maybe you might want to look at that. I understand it's regardless, it's going to be a cost, because we're asking for more issues, but maybe that might ease the burden on staff to allow them to get out good quality information, and yet, the other few issues are outsourced, just to, just to kind of give you guys a, a break. That would be my comment.
Also? Mayor, I want to do a follow-up. Is it legally viable to do advertisements at the back, so that we cover all costs, and now it's no longer a concern?
Well, I, I mean, I've, I've done that option for some cities as well, but all of that sponsorship takes time, and, and we would have to go out, and I would say that would maybe take a six to nine months process to go out, like, to create the documents, and then to go out to the community and see, and to pay this back, I'm not sure. I would have to do a cost-benefit analysis and present that to the city manager and get his, his take on it, but I'm, I'm not quite sure. Are you meaning a complete cost recovery, or just something to help supplement?
Just to help supplement, we put an advertisement page at the very back-
Hmm.
-to cover or offset a good percentage of the cost, and our local businesses would love it. It would be similar to a church bulletin.
Hmm.
And I, I, I think there that would solve the problem with advertis, the, the increased cost, and we can then go from six units to 10 units.
No, we can't, so it's, that's, that's, it, it's not really, I don't feel it's a financial, whatever, whatever decision you decide, if you want to go in-house or contract out, it can only be six, if you want it fully translated.
Because of the time and energy that's needed-
Exactly, to create-
To do double duty.
Exactly. It's the timing, it's the editing, it's the back and forth, it's the script writing, it's the proofreading, it's, there's quite a bit, there's a lot of intensity to it. I've gone through the timeline with the media team and the profile team, and then also with the contracted vendors, without them talking to one another, and their timelines meet. Their timelines are exactly accurate, except the vendor would be more comfortable with four issues, but we're pushing them to do six. And so they're saying to us that they would hold us to the deadlines, where when we do it in-house for the same six, we've got more flexibility, because they're part of our team, they're in-house, they'll wait late, they'll do it early in the morning, you know, they'll work on weekends if they have to, so there's just a little bit more flexibility with the in-house, but to push it to, to eight, or to 10, it's not possible with what we have.
Could we do a possible mix of ideas where we do advertisements at the back of, of the profile and add a 10th page? So now you have two additional sides of stories that could be added. So rather than eight pages, make it 10 pages, which includes advertisements.
Sure, I mean, we could absolutely do that, but what would that, that doesn't get you back to your 10.
It doesn't, but it allows, I would imagine, a couple more stories to be pushed into that, that profile. You have another page worth of stories that you could add.
I see what you're saying. I think, I mean, I, I believe that we could add more stories to you, if you, if pages, it would be probably an increase in paper, in, in ink and color and that, I don't think that would be more, the problem. I think this goes back to what Councilmember Camacho was saying, and Councilmember Laura was saying. It comes down to a timeliness issue. I think if you want the profiles at 10, you have, you have stories that are like hot breaking news, they're, they're, they're timely, you know, they're, they're relevant. I think what happens if you go down to six, the concern is that you're losing relevance. You know, you're kind of behind the story instead of in front of the story, and I think keeping it at 10, in English, it keeps you ahead and on, on your game. And I think keeping it at 10 in English, it keeps you ahead and on your game. Now, there are other things you could do, like for example, you could keep it in English. And then when we get our new 3D I system, you could, we could translate it and get it paid, translate it. And then do it on social media, translated. You could put it on the website, translated. It wouldn't go out to the public in print in Spanish. But those are other options. But my understanding was you wanted me to bring you a print cost.
Thank you, Director Ugar. I appreciate your time.
Sure.
And I think, well, to your point, Director Ugar, is that I think in essence of our technology advances moving so quickly, I think eventually we should get to a point where we're not doing any print. We're not mailing, we're not doing any postage, we're not doing print. Because you'd be surprised, a lot of savvy people out there with the smartphones, no matter their age. And so, and we already email the profile to those who are in the email. And you put it on social media. And I think that we can increase, of course, it gives us more time, content, the stories of today, right? And I think eventually that 311 system, when will we have it in place that we can send out a profile, for example, via the 311 system directly to your phone?
Yeah, I'll have Javier. He's in constant communication with the vendor. And we may actually have an update. I think we have a meeting scheduled with them tomorrow as well.
Yeah, that is correct. We can expect the system in its six modules that we're currently developing by the end of this year. So part of the communications plan and overall strategy that we're developing is to hopefully inform, raise awareness and educate the public about this system so that we can drive downloads and drive the registered accounts, which would then enable us to forward any of this information, whether it be the profile, whether it be the rec guide, whether it be a new magazine in the future, alerts of any sort specific to their requests. So that, but we're looking really closer to the end of the year. We're looking, we're targeting the holiday season as a way to promote this new virtual city hall so that we can start the new year on that new foot.
I have a comment. In addition with that, I know that the city of Norwalk has, even their website, a dropdown menu where it's embedded, you can select not just Spanish, but there's a whole list of different languages. It's so if you speak that language, you drop down and the entire content of each tab turns to that language. So I think that we have a local model that we can utilize. Our technology would be a better investment.
We'll definitely look into that, Mayor Proten.
We done with this? Okay. Item number 10, local hire ordinances, recommendations?
Yes, so the previous item, council, you want us to spend a little bit more time and bring back some additional options, correct?
Well, what I'd like you to consider is the merging of the existing that we have with an additional. Okay? So we don't have to violate either the union agreement, but maintain it. But, you know, create, you know, merge the two programs or possibly two programs.
Oh, okay, okay, I understand. You're on the next item. The previous item, we'll continue that item. We're now into the local hire ordinance, correct?
Was there a motion for the number nine?
Yeah, Mayor, I think, yeah, there was no motion.
Yeah, there was no motion.
So do you want to just leave it as a discussion item?
Well, there's still option number 12.
Let's keep discussing this.
Shoot affair.
Let's keep discussing it.
Yeah, we'll continue the item for a future discussion.
You'll concede that, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So we're going to continue with, okay. Can I go to number 10 now?
Yes, Mayor.
Local hire ordinances. Would you like to read the recommendation?
Sure, Mayor. As you know, you asked the city attorney to create a memo regarding our local hire ordinance. In the staff report, we had pointed out a couple of different things. One is the local hire ordinance in different municipalities. There's some constitutionality regarding those items. We also have currently in place a community workforce agreement. That is something that council had adopted. It's a five-year agreement. And so there were some questions as to whether creating a new ordinance, if that would conflict with our current agreement. So I believe that was the information that was provided to council and we're waiting for the direction.
So my point of being able to not exclusively have one or the other, but merge the two, is that a possibility?
Yeah, we can definitely look into that, Mayor. We can see how we can create some of those components that exist in municipalities as long as they don't violate our contractual agreement and also any constitutionality requirement. So we can definitely look into that further.
And again, so I remind you, the importance of this situation is a principal part of the economic development strategy that we have to use is, you know, we are not in the tax situation, you know, we're, we've exhausted that. Is basically, we're going to have to build wealth within our community, build wealth. Okay? So the idea is that the good construction jobs, the jobs that's going to be occurring, there's going to be a lot of activity occurring here and in the district. And what we want to do is that we want to have our residents as the primary beneficiaries of our tax dollars.
Okay, we'll do. We'll bring something back in a future date.
In addition, if I may, Mayor, I know that just similarly how we did for our CDBG funds, if it's federally allowed to account for as well minority workers, veterans, displaced workers. We already have that in the workforce agreement. But if we could allow something in there to, you know, we are a minority community. But to add something in there in terms of, I don't know if that is allowed, but if there are any existing agreements related to that.
Okay, Mayor Proten, we'll look into those areas as well.
Comments?
I worked on the community workforce agreement in 18 as mayor and with the trades. And I'm always looking forward to more improvements.
You want to just talk a little bit more about that? Because, you know, again, it's important what you're doing, okay? So could you explain what?
Well, I mean, the community workforce agreement that was developed basically gave, you know, some, you know, any contract over $250,000 allowed for us to make sure that we use our union representatives and also have some local hire as well. And so it's very important, I think, and that was a five-year plan that was developed and we didn't have one before. So I think that's great. And we met with Chris Henon from the trades, you and I, last year or was it this year? I don't remember.
Yeah.
But we went over this and discussed the possibilities of looking to, what do we look at to have a stronger local hire ordinance? And I think one of the discussions that we've been working on is trying to look at it from the perspective of, well, if we create the best local hire ordinance, but we don't have any candidates or labor pool to hire folks, then that becomes a challenge. So we need to increase our pool of candidates in these trades to be able to truly have a strong local hire program.
Yeah, the discussion that we had with the attorney of the trades basically said if we could get an agreement with the district that they could start, they could start an apprenticeship program here.
Yes, I think the discussion is to get them to adopt a curriculum that they can be utilized for the building trades outreach.
And just to mention, there's been a significant decline in the number of students that are applying for college, particularly the males. Okay? And here's a situation right here where we're going to have a, you know, a serious problem in terms of alternates. And I hope that we can get the apprenticeship program going, not only for, you know, resident students and veterans, but, you know, the community.
Mayor, if I may add, the last conversation I had with Chris Henon regarding the apprenticeship program with the school district, definitely they have some funding as well. And we're working on that as we speak. They did suggest, well, what would it look like if we had a regional approach? Say, for example, our neighboring city and/or neighboring school district to expand. And so I'm all for a regional economy, but I reminded them I want to focus just on Peque Rivera right now. And so I think there is, so that's a motion. So I think that's going to be great as far as creating a solid apprenticeship program. And/or there's already several apprenticeship programs. It's just identifying them and then for us to promote them, promote them in our profile, promote them, I mean, truly become the facilitator of these available opportunities for our youth, for our, you know, folks that have been currently incarcerated that have been out. So this is the opportunity for everyone there.
Councilman Laura?
I'm fine, no comments.
Councilman Lutz?
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to direct a question to our city manager, Carmona. We currently have a local workforce agreement that is a good one. But if we could merge the current one that we have, and if I understand, it's around contracts that are above $250,000, 30% of the workers can be pooled from our local city, is that correct?
Yes, 30% of the hours work will be pooled for the city. There would be preference for City of Peak River residents.
I'm welcoming doing a merging and improving this local workforce agreement to the advantage of local residents so that they have more income, more employment. I think that'd be great.
Yes.
Yes, we'll do. And I'd just like to add one more note that our community workforce agreement was a model that the city of Long Beach adopted. So we definitely will look forward to making it even better, so.
Well, as I mentioned, when the attorney was talking about it, he basically said if the city and the district could develop a joint one, we would be the first small city to have such a, to have such a program.
Yes, that is correct, Mayor. Okay.
Okay. We'll go on to the next one? Okay, because we've, just go ahead.
Do we need a motion for that one?
You're going to be looking at merging the?
Yes.
11, discussion item, assistance to veteran service groups with veteran census for the city.
I'd like to turn it over to our director, Mike Garcia.
So as directed at the last council meeting, we've actually spoken with Dan Ortiz. They are, they're in the process of developing and finalizing a survey, a very shortened one, about seven items. And what they're really seeking is if we could utilize some of our social media and other platforms to help get the information out there. Something that I thought would be critical to see in doing some brief research to prepare for this, the American Community Survey may have some reports that we may be able to glean information. It looks like right now we are combined with Montebello. And if we can separate out our city, we won't have to be so reliant on response rates from that survey. So we're, we were thinking that might be one option as well as seeing what we can do to help them get their survey out. They not only want to do traditional census to get the count, they want to find out if people are willing to provide their information so that then they can reach out to them, they can maybe realize some disability benefits if they need them or work with family members who may be needing such services. And so that would be great for us. If you have residents that are able to get additional benefits, they can put that money back to work within our city potentially. So we thought it was a great conversation we had with Mr. Ortiz. He's going to be the new commander for the VFW. And the current commander is going to take his spot as district commander. So we have good leadership there. There are folks that I was able to work with during the grant that we provided to them. And so if you're, if that's your pleasure, we would love to keep working with them.
I have a question. Have you had a conversation with any of the other veteran service organizations, the American Legions?
Not on this item, but I would like to engage them as well. Because I know that not only will their membership be able to reach out to people that are living within the city and that'll help response rate on the survey, but I'd like to see what they think that the, if there are any questions that could be added to the survey. I'd like to see if there's anything that Dan Ortiz would like to take their suggestions there. I, and we're going to continue to work with the other American Legions and the VFW. We're a little concerned about, we did find out that the VFW on Durfee has, is looking to dissolve as an operation. So it is very disheartening. I'm reaching out to Jesus Garcia, who we had worked with during the grant program, so.
And how much time, would it be you, the staff, time allocated to that? Or would it be another coordinator or supervisor?
You know, initially, right now, it'd be me because I have the relationship with these, with the commanders and the quartermasters at each one of the groups. But I would probably lean on, as I always do, Gabriel Castarreta and the folks from Parks and Rec who helped me tremendously with a lot of the outreach that we do, so. Mine would just be having fun. And one day, I'd like to go have a beer at one of their VFWs.
No, I think giving a better assessment to our veteran community here would be important. I know that we've, we know that this is a veteran community. We know that there's a lot of veterans in our city. We see it every time during Memorial Day or Veterans Day when we have to in-person. But we never really had a true assessment as to how many actual veterans there are in our city. So I think any census. But I would say though, that if whatever we're doing, initiatives that we're doing with the veterans, we need to make sure we include all parties. I know the American Legions just had a barbecue last week fundraiser. And so we need to be discussing, whatever we do, we need to be discussing. There used to be a veterans council. I know the mayor's, what was it? It's been like two years since we had that one meeting with the veterans. And part of that meeting was to determine what services are not. Eventually, what we're trying to develop, right, I'm assuming, get the census, understand our, the amount of veterans that are here, the age groups of those veterans, because it's not all senior veterans. There's a lot of veterans now that are young. And then determine how do we best provide services to them? How do we facilitate services from the federal government, services that we currently call the congressional office to provide those services? So eventually, that's what we want to do. And in that meeting, I mean, I, we challenged, you know, I told Dan and others that if I was a veteran today and I walked into the VFW, what services, besides a beer, what services would you provide me to assist me and direct me? Because we don't want to get to the position that we're managing the services for them. We're facilitating and supplementing and supporting them because they're the front people. So we want to make sure we don't create something that we can't even manage ourselves. But again, that's just my point. But I do believe that a better assessment of who we, who we have here as veterans is good.
Councilman?
I believe the commander, Dan Ortiz's objective is to find out whether, if we have 800 veterans that live in the community or 3,000. And I know we had probably 3,000 at one point. And once we identify the exact amount or a rough estimate, then we can do that outreach. Not the city, but the veterans organizations can now provide that outreach and let them know about all the benefits that are available to them. And I think that was the original goal. And Mr. Ortiz said, there are so many benefits for veterans that are out there, they just don't know about it. And if I could only harness their names and their addresses and their emails, I could then do an outreach. And the rest of the veterans organizations can do the same. And if I can get a little helping hand from the city of Peak River, I could accomplish my mission. And I really like the fact that we're moving forward on that. Thank you, Director.
Yeah, I certainly support a veteran census, collecting the information. I do have a little concern in the sense of we do, let's try to access some of that other data as well and not try to duplicate services or recreate the will, so to speak. In addition, the keeper of the data, for instance, you know, you said the VFW on Durfee is going down. Let's say that the VFW on Serapis should go under. Would we have access to that data? And let's say that the VFW doesn't get along with the American Legion commander. And the VFW commanders or American Legion commanders will try to take a stronghold of that data. I think it's going to be difficult to manage, who are the keepers of this information? And certainly, I don't want to create more work or problems. I don't think that that's our role. But I do support collecting information and getting to know who are our veterans in the city. I know not everybody wants to or is eligible to become a member of the VFW. And not everyone wants to go to the American Legion either. But I think it's important to look, to get data, collect data and find out who our veterans are.
Yeah, thank you. I brought this item before council because I too talked with Commander Ortiz. Commander Ortiz, and I think, uh, Councilmember Lutz did a really good summation of exactly what they're asking for. In regards to the question of who will be the, who will have custody of the data, it's them. It's their data. It's their census. It's, it's their census. So if it's their census, it's their data. They're just asking us for help in terms of social media. But, you know, Director Garcia being as, you know, smart and as intuitive and as forward-thinking as he is, he's going to give suggestions on, hey, what about this? What about that? Oh, you know what? There's this other survey over here. Maybe we could extract some of that data. Right? That's, that's just who you are and what you bring to the table, and it just magnifies what they're trying to do. But at the end of the day, this is their project. They're just asking for some social media help. The extra that we bring to the table is just because we have those types of people. Um, so, so make no mistake about it, it's their data. Um, this is what they're asking for. And before we can do, uh, before we can treat, we need to do an assessment. We need to find out who exactly is here. What services do they need? Um, and then what they want, really, at the end of the day, is Veterans Resource Center. And they'd like that actually through county funds. Um, and that's part of one of the, you know, I try to etch out money for them in a separate proposal that's before that will be brought back to this council so that the VFWs don't have to close. You know, the VFW on Serapis and Bermudas, they're financially sound. Um, the other VFW unfortunately had multiple issues, COVID, Durfee is closed. So they had access issues. Um, but I'm happy that we are assisting, uh, Commander Ortiz. And, you know, obviously, we want to, we want to interact with the American Legion. We want to interact, interact with, with, with the other veteran organizations in the community. Um, but when you go out and when you, you know, engage with some of these veterans, he's very forward-thinking. He's very forward-thinking. He's someone who has, um, been within Supervisor Hilda Solis's office. He has had numerous positions in terms of veteran affairs, and so he understands the value of outreach and the value of resources that are being untapped by veterans in our organization. So thank you very much for assisting him. Um, please let us know how we can help you assist him further. Thank you.
City manager staff reports.
Mayor, City Council, um, I just have just a quick update from our director, Pamela Ugar. Um, you know, I know, uh, Councilmember Laura had asked, can we have a fireworks show? Um, and so we just wanted to give you an update on that. Pam, you're going to have to be the bearer of bad news.
I looked at you like, what report? No, I, I am the bearer of bad news. I'm sorry. Um, but, um, doing a fireworks show at the last minute proved to be, um, very difficult. And I'm all about having a party. You know, so, um, that's what we'd like to do. We'd really like to do that. But it was, um, very difficult to find a, um, a suitable location because our, our typical location was closed for construction. And so, um, that kind of held us back a little bit. And also, um, there are so many new permitting processes in place because of COVID, and that took time, that, that would take extra time. We weren't sure if we could get the permit from the Pyrotechs from LA County. In addition, LA County Public Health has placed new permits on, um, on cities and any kind of social gathering over 250, and we anticipated 5,000. So that was going to complicate the, the issues even more. And also just the logistics and staffing, we are so short-staffed. We are really having a hard time hiring people. I mean, that's across the board in, uh, most of the city. So I'm really sorry about this, but, um, it doesn't seem like we have the ability to do it this year.
Did, did we look into the option of just having a fireworks show but not having the public? Like not having the public physically there, like we do in times past, but still having the fireworks show for the community?
No, I didn't.
Okay.
No, I didn't.
That's fine. That's fine. That's fine. Um, it's late in the game. I appreciate what you've brought to us, but I, I understand. Thank you.
Let me go around the horn here. Uh, Mayor Protem, do you have any questions?
Could you give us an update of the, um, Memorial Day event that we will be?
Oh, sure.
Having?
Absolutely. I went out there with Efren this afternoon. Uh, we did a walk-through at, um, at the Eternal Flame. Such a beautiful memorial out there. Um, um, we will be, um, out there from nine to 10 a.m. on, on Monday. There will be two wreaths put out, um, one from the VFW and, um, one from the, um, other group on both sides. There will be no parking on either, on either side of the road so that there will be a drive-through. People will be able to come by, pay the respects, um, and we'll have it live, um, sorry, on so, um, social media, um, Gabe will be out there live and streaming. But something beautiful that we're having is, um, we didn't promote this because of traffic issues. We didn't want people to stop. But as they're coming by at nine, nine fifteen, nine thirty, and ten, we'll have a bugler playing taps, a live bugler. And so we anticipate that being very beautiful as people, but we didn't want to promote that so that people don't stop their cars. We need them to keep, to keep going. However, if the community wants to come, they can park across the street and they can listen from their cars as well. Thank you all people.
There.
Okay, great. It would be nice to have you.
Counselman Lutz?
No comment. I'm looking forward to the event.
Uh, just a quick question. Is it too short for us to get this questionnaire surveyed to the participants for the veteran census?
You want us to pass them out to each car?
I mean, why not?
Are you joking?
This will be the opportunity for us to do so. I mean, there already is.
Sounds like they're close to finalizing their survey questionnaire, so.
And certainly, they don't have to be a veteran to pass through. They could be, um, uh, family members.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Someone that passed away. Uh, they had a family member that passed away, correct?
Absolutely. Yes.
You know, that, that's one of the benefits of the American Legion. I was an American Legion member because my father was a Vietnam-era veteran. So when I joined, when I would go to meet with him at the Norco American Legion, they made me a member, and, and I did not renew it unfortunately, but that's an option. And that, I'd like to reach out to Mr. Ortiz and say, is there a possibility to include the American Legion for those who are not veterans of foreign wars and they're, you know, ser, they're family members of service members? So.
I will say, check in with the American Legion and the VFW in all fairness to avoid any school problems.
They can probably bring their own fireworks, huh?
There you go.
Check in with each one, please.
I'll be working with Sam Anderson and Jesse Elias and all of them. Absolutely.
Uh, okay. Um, you know, the fireworks situation is, is a tradition in Pico Rivera. It, it really is. And the thing that we have to consider is that, uh, if there isn't one, is it going to reflect bad on us? You know, so we have to be able to control the, you know, the messaging in this situation or provide something because again, um, you know, this is, uh, this is when, you know, they're, they're going to test our metal, you know, in terms of their recovery and so on. They see no fireworks, uh, you know, what is that message you're going to send? So we're going to have to be careful in the way that we, you know, that we handle it. Uh, you know, just, uh, just again, if there's something that we can do. The other thing that it's going to cause, it's going to cause tremendous additional stress on our sheriff's department because Fourth of July, people are going to want to just blow some steam off. So you're going to, you're going to be hearing some fireworks all over, no?
That has been the past history.
In addition, on New Year's Eve, correct, this, the fireworks situation was tremendous?
Yes, it's, it's usually to a lesser degree than Fourth of July. Fourth of July is usually, um, quite, uh, significant, and it is taxing on our, on our field units, yes.
Lieutenant has their own party at home, right?
Lieutenant is present with all of the field troops.
That's it, Mayor. That's it. Uh, new business? No new business? Oh, business? No, we covered that in there. Okay, the good of the order. Uh, let's begin with Mayor Protem Sanchez.
Thank you. I, I, surprisingly, I, uh, don't have much to report. My SAF meeting was canceled, um, due to lack of quorum, and so I'll have more, I'll have more, uh, next two weeks. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Camacho?
I don't have anything to report today, Mayor.
All this? Okay. Councilmember Laura?
I'm going to make that three for three. I'm going to make that, uh, nothing to report.
Counselman Lutz?
Thank you, Mayor. It looks like everybody's tired. I just want to say, I participated last week with the seniors out in front in the senior, uh, center parking lot, their first, uh, bingo session, but it was done out in the parking lot. I was fortunate enough to be able to call out the numbers. It was great to talk to the seniors and to joke with them and to be an MC for the first time in my life. I liked it, and so I'd like to be a part of it again. So if the seniors would welcome me back and they're going to do parking lot bingo, or when the senior center in fact opens up partially in July, I'd like to, uh, be invited back to do that, uh, honor of calling out the numbers. And so that was really special to me, to engage the residents in person, of course, with the proper masking. Uh, and that was, uh, the highlight of, of the prior week. And, uh, on another topic, uh, the city is forward-thinking and is going to be adding new housing over the next couple of years. And there is one particular site that's moving along, and that is the former Rodeo nightclub site. And I understand that the planning commission, uh, took a look at some items that was provided by the property owner. And I would like to see if staff can provide a report to see what the pros and cons are of apartments versus condominiums, or condominiums that are for ownership, and see what the pros are, what are the benefits, uh, especially revenue-wise for the city, if it is apartments, um, or versus homeowners that are living in condos. That would help me analyze, and I think it would help the rest of the council analyze, uh, that project when it comes before us. And so if, if we can have staff look into that, uh, Director Garcia, in the upcoming future, and.
Counselman?
Yes.
Any task that requires more than an hour needs a second.
I will second that.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, on that same note, um, there is a, um, going to be a Zoom, um, virtual town hall session, um, which I saw the Chamber of Commerce was promoting, a consultant is looking to get community feedback next Thursday, June 3rd, at six to seven o'clock. And, um, it will be a town hall and discussion of that project in terms of community feedback for mixed use of building, building that. Um, if you haven't driven by, it's completely leveled. There's nothing there anymore. So it's going to be developed, and we want to get community feedback in that. So, um, if, I don't think it's been published yet on our, on our social media page, but, um, it will be, it's going to be happening next week, and, and, uh, we hope to get community feedback.
That's it for me.
That's it for you? Okay. I'm going to make up for all, all of you. Uh, Mr. Sanchez's questions. Okay. He's happy that everything is going on. Do we know when we're going to be able to start working on the street there?
Yeah, I, um, uh, the bids, uh, were received, and they were opened, uh, last week. So I'll be able to have, uh, a better, uh, idea, uh, in the next few days. Yeah, but the good thing is that we received bids, so.
Am I going to be able to get a date in the next meeting?
Yes, you will.
Uh, I just wanted to again, uh, talk about the monumental, you know, situation that the city manager is working on. And, uh, we are on for, uh, the joint school district and city.
That is correct, uh, Mayor. We, I just had my discussion with Dr. Asparza. We are working out the logistics and, uh, the agenda items for discussion for both, uh, bodies to, uh, take a look at. Um, and so we're definitely looking forward to that. I think we identified the location as the Smith Park Auditorium, um, and so, uh, we'll keep you, we'll keep you posted.
Okay. Uh, now I have to do a little housekeeping. Counselman Laura, you have not scheduled your retreat discussion?
June, June 12th, right?
Huh?
June 12th, right?
12?
Yeah, June 12th.
Okay, can you write that down just?
No, no.
No, I'm talking, they need to interview you individually.
Oh, 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 the, the contract, the contractor wants to talk to me.
Yes.
About organizing. Okay, my apologies. Um, Sandra, uh, could you please email me tomorrow? Thank you. Got it.
Okay. Mayor Protem, you're in the same, can you?
I have scheduled meetings for tomorrow. Just today. So we'll, we'll work on it.
All right.
Sandra and I have been communication.
Am I good?
You're good.
Okay, all right. Uh, okay, the, um, the property, uh, the VFW on Durfee property is going to be available. And are, are we already moving in the direction of seeing if we can, uh?
Um, I would save that, uh, discussion for a closed session.
Closed session? Okay. And the last, uh, item here, and it's, uh, because Ms. Jerome wanted me to, is that, uh, our ad hoc committees have expired in terms of the time situation. So what we need to do is, um, again, uh, we had targeted August for each one of you to present your report as to the situation of whether you wanted to create a standing committee, you know, from your committees, or if it, uh, you know, fulfilled its purpose. Okay? Uh, could I ask that we get an extension till August for the report? Yes? Okay. Oh, August, okay. And it could be written in verbal, too. We want to make it as easy as possible. That's it for me.
That's it.
Yes?
Meeting adjourned.